Meeting started. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll continue our budget talks with Public Works. Mr. Johnson?
And just to kind of go back in streets, one of the things that we talked about, you know, I had some questions about the flower and street and material landscape supplies. Went back and sat down with my folks. We recommend that we change the flowers to 155,000, which is a reduction of 22,856, and took the street and landscape supplies from an ask of 370 to 325, which is a decrease of 67,856. And then, as Jill said, there was an add-back in for a safety coordinator position that would just be housed out of the street's budget of 50,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the pro group taxes and retire.
Yeah, I mean, that safety person will be paying out of utilities at least. Yeah, I mean, it can be done. You all don't have to pay.
I thought there was one more edit, Richard. Wasn't there three?
That was, the other one was in sanitation.
Okay.
And that was, we dropped landfills from the placeholder of 350,000 and dropped it down to 300,000 for a change of $50,000. Because we're running it projected at 288, and we were looking at the numbers today and the receipts in hand, and I think that we'll be fine at that 300,000.
So the safety coordinator position is really going to be in utilities and not in Public Works?
No, it's going to be for departments. We don't have a safety department.
Department.
And we definitely have been doing training for each of the departments and supervisors, and we have a new safety personnel manual. But we need to start, we need at least a full-time safety personnel, just to make sure that we're following the guidelines.
And will this be like a shared cost like we've done in the past?
It's going to be expensive.
25% from gas, 25% from water, sewer, 25% electricity, 25% Public Works.
And police.
So is the, is the 50 the total, or is that a percentage of?
That's the total.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be distributed now.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, were there any other edits that you had?
That was it, and as well as sanitation, what you covered, we dropped the, as I said, the landfills by $50,000.
Okay.
On the sanitation, what did we decide to do on the vehicle purchases, or did we push that out into capital?
Let me pull up a worksheet, and although I did not add that in the capital purchases because it's not technically a purchase, I did put it underneath expenses, so it's kind of a placeholder, so it's coming out of the earnings.
I'll tell you what I did in my budget. I put $350,000 in for that.
As a straight purchase?
As a straight purchase, although that would not purchase all of them. It would start funding it as soon as they come in, even if they come in the next fiscal year. And in the next fiscal year, you don't have to budget a million dollars for it, or more.
And I don't want to get too deep in the woods on this. I did share this with the mayor today, and I think I shared it with council president. If y'all take one of those and go around. One of the, one of the questions or exercise that you asked us to look into, and this is, I don't want to say it's half-baked, it's partially baked, is, you know, what is, what are the possible economies looking at a, looking at a residential service going from twice a week to once a week? And that was, that became an interesting exercise. Just to give you the numbers today, the first thing you see on here is our residential customer billing units. I actually built this chart back in 2017 and calculated the growth rate, but the two numbers you see highlighted in yellow, those are actual as of Friday morning. And so the only change that would have happened in those numbers is any new customers that came in today. So those are, those are real-world numbers today on the street on September 30th, at the end of the fiscal year. So we have 10,381 customer billing units. 602 of them are commercial accounts, 9,779 are residential accounts. Also in the next graph, I just kind of did 2017, 2018, those are real numbers. 2019 is based upon the budget amount, as well as the income is the actual amount as of the date that that information was pulled. And then I show you the budget numbers from 2020. And of course, one of the things that is not as descriptive it needs to be is that the lease cost, the debt service, the lease to own reside in a different place in the budget. So, but they are, they are produced by and an operational expense of sanitation, so they're not captured here. I've been working with Kim Creach. We're, we're trying to fix a matrix so we can actually show you that dollar-for-dollar as it's, as it's assigned.
In other words, it's the total expenses, we're not going to determine the increase in the rate until we have the rest of the figures.
Work off of good numbers. But just, just to play this exercise real quick, just what this means, that you'll see in the box. This is actually the staffing that is currently assigned to residential garbage service. And if you'll notice, it's six of them are highlighted. They work on the auto-collect residential garbage service. It's twice a week. Mr. Dale and Mr. Blair are a part of the backdoor service. And just to tell you the assumptions and how I get to the numbers that I'm going to describe to you, currently, there are six staff members that are assigned to the twice-a-week exclusively, and that represents 25% of the total staffing in Public Works, or sanitation, excuse me. One of the big thing is, is we don't have a accurate way to tell you exactly what is the count, how many physical houses we do twice a week with auto-collect. Because I understand these numbers represent all residential, and some of them are multifamily, some of them are backdoor, and majority of being auto-collected. Right now, for our sanitation services for auto-collection, we operate on four 10-hour shifts, and we estimate that 75% of that shift is actually spent on route. The other two and a half hours are consumed by, one, the pre-tripping the truck ready to go out in the morning. And then a typical truck will make four trips to the transfer station to unload, go back out on route. And then there's about a 30-minute time to bring the truck in, has to be washed down per health department standards, and basically put to bed to be ready for the next day. For the purpose of just these cost comparisons, there was assumption that 75% of the residential billing units would be used for these houses, holds we're talking about in service. That is an arbitrary number. It's just a number that I think is conservative that gets us to an ability to calculate this. Because here's the challenge. Sanitation budget as it is done is encompassing recycled trash, all forms of garbage, as well as landfill and transfer. So it's hard to just pull out, what is the cost of the twice-a-week, single-family residential service? And for the purposes of these cost comparison, 30% of the overall operating budget less salaries will be assigned to the twice-a-week residential garbage collection. So what does that mean? These are the 2019 numbers below that. Right now, if you back out the total salaries of 2019 budget with overhead, it's 1.4 million and some change. And if you look at what is the, what represents 25% of that, you see the 352,256 over to the right. What are the operating costs? Right now, from budget 2019 is 810,346. But note that right now, projected landfill is 288. That cost would not change going to once a week. The volume of garbage going to landfill would be the same and growing based upon customers. So you back that out, and the actual operation's about 522,000 and some change. So 30% of that's at 156,703. So what are the potentials for savings? Right now, we have using 75%, 73, 7,334 customers to service, and we get two days to service them since we're doing it twice a week. And that means we have to service 3,667 customers per day. What is the hours required at an 80 cart, which is the average, an auto-loader can do about 80 carts an hour? That requires 45.84 hours of service. And if you divide that by 7.5, the time a truck is, on a shift is on route, that says we require six trucks. Well, we're operating six trucks with six drivers, so that, that logic seems to hold true. What does once a week look like? Well, the customer's the same, but the number of days of service doubled to four, and the customers per day drop in half, and the hours required is 22.92. But notice I put a note here. The assumption is the volume's going to be a little heavier, since everybody has one shot, and one shot only to get their garbage out when you don't have a makeup day, basically, with twice a week. So I did get conservative and drop that I think there would be at least two more trips to the transfer station per shift, and that time on route drops to 6.5 hours. Calculating, it does, it is lower than four, but I rounded up to an even, even number, four trucks. So what is the potential savings and change in effectiveness? Well, you go from six to four, which is a 33% reduction. If you just use them straight-up ratios to the 25% of salaries, reduce that by 33%, you see that number. And if you look at what an operator three, average operator two plus benefits, that lands about in that range. And the savings in operation, again, you see that. So you see a number that, that about $170,000 that could be saved. Doesn't seem like a lot, because you got to remember that the biggest challenge in that, when we went through this exercise, is we're the most efficient in the auto-service, meaning our cost per unit to service is probably the lowest. Yeah, the trucks are expensive, but a truck can handle 80, 80 customers an hour, you know, close to 800 a day, or, excuse me, close to, you know, 650, 700 a day. So you can see that if 2019 budget numbers were at once, once a week, our income versus cost would go from 86 to 93%. Not, not a big change there. But one of the things that doesn't say on this sheet is this, and the mayor and I talked about this earlier, and that's kind of part of this. Right now, we have six trucks. Two of them are literally brand-new. We ordered them over a year and a half ago, and we got them over the summer. So all of a sudden, once a week would take the demand from any new orders would go away today, meaning that if we knew we were going to transition over the next six months, that new truck is not needed because we have a surplus of trucks. Plus, the fleet that we have lifespan logically could expand 33% longer than it would at, considering the road miles have cut in half because we're only going to every home once instead of twice, or buy every home every twice. So that is a significant savings in the sense is that if you eliminate a quarter million dollar truck from the ask of this budget, and the fleet you have can take you longer than it would be if you were still doing twice a week. Haven't quantified that. That's, that's kind of the, the part, rest of this recipe that has to be done, but wanted to give you something to think about. The other thing, just for kind of a real-world comparison, is Daphne opened bids last week for private haulers to bid on, give us a price to give our citizens exactly what they're getting today, which is once-a-week garbage, once-a-week trash, once-a-week recycling. Baldwin County Container came in at 2174. Republic came in at 2303. Arrow came in at 2255, and Baldwin County, the actual county, their solid waste division, bid it at 2350. Am Waste came in at 1910, but I have a note here that they, that was continued upon the city giving them their trucks to use at no fee to them. With that said, that average is, taken out the low one, is 2270 a, a month. There is a, definitely a profit margin there. They're, they're for profit business, so if that profit margin is 12%, the actual cost's about 1998. If it's 15%, it's about 1930. So that's for one, one in one. That's what the private sector says, that that's about the going rate. So that just kind of give you an, we tomorrow will be at 1580. And we were 1480 today, tomorrow it does go up $1, just to kind of give you that idea. One of the things that we're going to continue on this worksheet, and Kim is helping me, is, is we will show you your options. If we want to keep things the same twice a week, and we want to continue to replace the fleet as we're recommended, we'll show you what that cost is, and we'll also show you what once a week looks like, and if it's sustainable under the current fee. But two, two takeaways. One, we provide a high level of service. We're proud of that. And two, we provided it a value. Right now, I think when we add in the debt service, which is not a permanent expense, meaning when they're paid off and we don't buy anything new, then, then it does go away one day, but, but trucks wear out, so that's not a, that's a fallacy, and is, you got to look at it this way. If, if the general fund subsidizes sanitation by a half a million dollars on annual basis, that's a half a million dollars that's not able to build a ball field, that's to build a police precinct, or fix a roof, or whatever. I don't know if we're supposed to be dollar-for-dollar even in our operations, or if we want to make sure that we don't, we at least maintain a 90%. That's going to be y'all's leadership to us, to tell us what, what those numbers need to be. But we're going to try to define that as best as we can to show you what the options are and what the recommendations at least give you an idea.
We'll know more when you put this together, but in 2019, or in this, in this budget, I think it's going to show like 600, maybe, 600 deficit, and with new equipment that we will have to purchase in this budget. We won't see it until 2021, the payment, but that will just add to that deficit. So it's, it's going to be more than 500, I mean.
I also want to say one thing, though. I'm not sure you were correct on, when you said that the trucks will only run half as much. I think to reach those customers per day, you had to run, in the, in the first, today, you have to run six trucks a day for seven and a half hours, collecting 80 carts per hour to reach 3,667 a day. And if you only have four, those still, those same four truck, not same four, two-thirds of the number of trucks still have to run all day. You took, you reduced the amount of collection time because you've got some transit time in there. But they're still running all day.
Yes, yes.
So I still think they're putting the same amount of mileage on the trucks. So I don't think you use them half as much.
Well, and, but that's the, that's the, the hard thing to give you a measure on, is we still have to run the same route twice a week. Whereas when we go, if we go to once a week, we're only running that route once. So the mileage, the, I think that there is less mileage.
But you're just doing it with different trucks, less trucks, though.
That's true. I mean, but, but remember, we're covering the city twice where we only have to cover it once. Now, the volume's going to be heavier during those days because we're, we're basically collecting the same amount in half the time, you know, if you look at it that way. So that's why I added that time for transfer. But until you get it and run it, and I get-
I think if you just look at total truck miles, though, your calculation is probably more accurate where you left it, which is four trucks compared to six. So you got a
Yeah, I agree.
33% reduction in miles, probably not 50%.
You know, and I only know what I know, and, you know, Daphne services all of their customers with four trucks, but they're once a week. And now, they're considerably larger trucks, but because they have to run to the, to the, the actual landfill to unload because there's not a transfer option there. So, but, but that's just the, we're going to continue this conversation. You know, the, the one thing is, is that, that I think it's great to discuss it, the budget, but this would be something, if you desired it, it would have to be a transition. We have to have time to plan for it and act it. So, you know, I don't think that we can, it's appropriate to make any assumptions in this budget at this point in time, but it's something we can plan for. And if that's an interest that, you know, we shoot for a targeted date of, you know, the second quarter of the fiscal year or whatever, we can plan for that. You know, I don't know how much time it would take to get everybody educated and get the routes reestablished, but we could figure it out.
And we do want to do a survey, too.
Yes, we want to get some feedback, and I know Councilman Brown has more-
I know an official, and it was about, over two to one, keep it two days a week.
Okay.
But we have to have the accurate price in there, too.
Right. Well, I mean, I just said, would you really have to pay a $2 increase per month?
It's going to be more than $2. I mean, I think you just do that and then just show what it would be, because he just showed, said that without the profit for the open bid, it's going to be around 19-something.
I think it should be a one-for-one, personally. I mean, I don't think, I mean, that's a direct service the city is providing, and it could go to a privatized, and they'd be paying 22 or whatever.
One-for-one.
Right. And that's why I said, ours would probably, I mean, I don't know what's going to, he's going to work it out, but it probably will be closer to the 19.
Right. You mean, double it up several dollars. You're still cheaper than a private service coming in, and again, twice a week service.
I agree.
Yeah. I think it could be, let them decide, yeah.
But we do need to, well, we don't necessarily have to decide, but we, you don't want to order that next truck if-
The one thing I will promise you, the good news is, before we can order a truck, we have to come back to you. And I'm not going to come back to you and ask to order a truck until we have vetted every question, every option, and y'all have given us guidance which way to go. Is that fair enough, in that statement?
Fair enough.
So-
We could vote to raise garbage rates, and then we come back with more information and authorize purchases of new trucks.
And I will, we, we will have you, Kim, Kim has already got me a great scheduling of the committed-to debt service, what the future debt service looks like, and how it applies, and we're going to put that in so that you can really see apples to apples. And we'll, I'll have you all that information.
And we're also going to be putting in, when we get the new license, for the amount we have to put aside for the landfill to close it. I mean, there's just other fees and, that we've not put in the budget before, but we're going to have to soon. We hopefully have 10 more years for that, but we still would put money aside for it.
All right. Who would y'all like to go next, council?
Counsel, are we through with Public Works?
We've got fleet and facilities maintenance.
All right, let's go to, let's go to fleet.
As, as stated, there, there is no ask for additional personnel. Pretty much, everything is in line and reflective of actuals in last year, and actually, this budget is negative 0.6% less than its ask than it was last year. So we're not, no real big wholesale change in there. If there's any particular item you'd like to discuss, we'd be glad to. If you'll notice that, like, general supplies went down, but then you see snu lines like safety wear and PPE, we've tried to better define those. So we've captured them where they're, they're better assigned, but accounted for at the, the bottom line.
And all the changes I did do in Munis, but on the communications line, Jeff went and today, went and broke out all the Verizon, remember, it was all stuck in general admin. So these increases, there's a $2,059 increase to the fleet communications, and this is kind of across all the general fund departments, and it's basically just reallocating what was all dumped in general admin to all the different departments. And that changes that total.
It was in general admin and the general-
Right.
Okay. So I rephrase that. I'm 0.1% below budget of last year.
Well, and it's all reflected in Munis, if y'all kind of look at those totals, but that changed it to 4,219 over on the communications line. Yes. Which changed your total 637,729.
You're going to make me print new paper sheets again, aren't you?
We'll print them all out again, I promise.
Counsel, I'm going to point out a couple of other trends. We've been kind of talking about these. It is a, it is a slight reduction in last year's budget, very slight, I'm going to call it level, pretty much. It is a 15% increase over what was actually spent, the budget over actuals. And in your actuals from 2018, if 2020 were actuals and not just budget numbers, it would be a 28% increase over 2018 and a 35% increase over 2017.
And which line is that, councilman?
I'm looking, I don't know if you have that. I'm looking at 2017 actuals of 470,671.
Okay, I got you.
2018 at 496,610.
I think the largest number out, that's the increase in employee medical insurance, and that's going to be what it is, you know?
Right.
And you've got the OPEV in there, too, whereas at 17 and 18, you didn't have any retirees, so no due.
If you can't answer this, Jill, if you can't answer this for legal reasons, is that employee medical, is that just an estimate?
Yeah.
Sign a percentage to everybody.
So on the medical, I took employees in that department based on the family coverage or single coverage, and per month, what that estimated funding cost is.
Okay. It was based on an estimated funding cost, though?
Estimated funding cost, based on, so that's the reason you'll see it, you're going to see it up.
I've seen those numbers going up considerably, and I didn't think that our cost of coverage was going up that much.
Well, our cost of coverage is going to go up 3,000,000 based on our new stock loss. And you have to, you have to put that in, you have to put that in the mix, one of those numbers. But we budgeted what's in the past, you're budgeting, you know, an estimate-
It's always an estimate, right.
But claims, but claims could go up or down. I'm trying to move everything over to one fund where we can, you know, be able to consolidate over one fund, instead of trying to get these departments up and down, I guess.
Well, let me give you an example. If I go back to the facilities maintenance budget for that, for the employee medical, I see a tripling of cost.
But I'm taking that employee that needs to give me a list of current employees, and I'm taking that list based on the estimated funding costs times employee times 12 months. That's what makes that number up.
And plus two electricians are being paid out of that department now, where they were, used to be paid out of the electric department, because they do work.
Three, three, three new employees.
Yeah, there you go.
That's both of them.
But the main thing is, it's not by department now.
Yeah, but I'm looking to that, though, Lance, just to that point, and I, you know, and I know that I can't look at salaries, you know, being apples to apples, because you could have higher-paid or lower-paid employees. But if I look at that, it, it went up, just say roughly 50%, but the employee medical cost went up 300%. So I, I'd wondered So if that was all being taken out of, say, electrical, then that had to, I mean, flick over there, did that go down significantly, then?
I don't know if, well, it was one new employee, but two of them came from electric, so.
Oh, okay, he came from electric.
Now, that's, do you think that's right? Our predicted actuals were 39,2 this year, and we've gone to 93?
That's what I'm saying, they're, they're tripled.
Yeah, Kim is trying to explain that, you know, there's, there's such a up and down.
I think that you were doing the expenses by department when that's always going to fluctuate, and now it's per, it's the same per employee, no? I mean, that's, that's the difference.
Yes, the difference is, so, so right now, we're on a monthly basis, and when claims come in, we pull money out of general fund all through the month, every week, we pull from the general fund to pay the claims at the end of the month, and we're going back to each department where they work to post the claims. If we continue that way, which is a lot of work, we continue that way, you'll, it'll be tough to even budget, because you may have a really sick person that's working in fleets, and it's going to eat up or-
Well, that's why I'm asking you. I don't think, I don't know, that's why I'm really careful to talk about these numbers, because if you're actually putting claims data in the medical insurance cost as opposed to just a per-person estimate-
And that's what she's doing now, just per-person.
Okay.
That's a per-person estimate.
And now, you've got me concerned. These two departments have the exact same number of people in it, but one of them is 45,000 for insurance, and one of them is 93, so-
We might have- One might have social coverage and family.
Family, yeah, because family is.
Maybe, okay.
The majority of the employees on the insurance pay.
Total, total number of insured, based on total number of insured in that department.
And some of them might have been hired before 2017, some of them after.
Depending on, if you have a department that has very little turnover, well, then you're going to have, the city pays 100% of it, and so if they were hired prior to 17, those departments, you get a relief from a new employee having family coverage or single coverage, they pay a percent, they pay a fee for the insurance. If you have a department that has very little turnover, you're going to see that cost higher because the city pays 100% of that health insurance for single and family.
It is per employee, but it does depend on family, single, and when they were hired.
I got you, okay.
Okay. I hear what you're saying, it just, it still seems, you know, a, I guess the lower, the smaller the department, the more the effect, but seeing 300% increases are, that's pretty eye-opening, and the other one is fleet maintenance is, you know, more than a, you know, more than 200%.
What's included in there also short-term and long-term disability, that the city pays 100% and the health insurance is all in that one line.
But the, oh, did you say short-term?
Short-term, long-term.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
Yeah, short-term and long-term and medical is all included in that one GL line.
Yeah. So, when I'm picking on these numbers, and I quote, well, it went up 28% over two years or 35% over three years, especially in a department like this, that employee medical is pretty substantial, that's a large number. But then again, if that's, it is what it is type saying, then that's more palatable than, it's not as palatable if, you know, you say, well, it's gone up, your budget's gone up 35% in three years, but if medical was 20% of it.
For facilities especially, I mean, we went from before this term, having one person, for all of our facilities, which is not good, to having, we may or may not be fully staffed, but we have 100 buildings and now we have six, but we beefed it up quickly because we needed to, and, yeah, that's a big, you know, hiring increase, which was needed.
Yeah, but my point is almost in defense of them too, is that I was talking about a 15% from 2019 actuals to propose this year. Well, guess what? 10% of that's medical.
And as.
And then a tiny is the OPEB, and, you know, it's significant, so.
And, you know, and unfortunately, as your manager here, I really can only control from, from below the, you know, the employee costs down.
Well, let's say we had some cost-cutting measures, that's one, that you would say, well, why did this go up 200%?
But it didn't go up 2% for the whole city.
Pardon?
It didn't go up that much for the whole city.
Okay, yeah, right.
I mean, we're just department, like, it will, depending on the department, but the overall increase was, what, 300?
That was in the stock.
That was the stock loss, and then whatever the estimate is from insurance, because there is an increase every single year, but we are proposing a wellness program that will incentivize keeping those rates, which are very, very, very good. But we consider these reduced rates based on everyone taking their part in a wellness program.
And included in the rates is money for wellness too.
Right.
So, you know, adding $10 per month per employee to cover wellness costs.
But the proposal is too, that in order to keep the low rates that we have, there will need to be some participation in wellness, and that's just going to build accountability, but it also hopefully will help us increase health and body work and everything.
Reduce actual claims paid, hopefully reduce the actual claims.
Absolutely, I mean, it's just a proven thing that it will, and a lot of municipalities are doing this, a lot of, I mean, the county's doing it too, so. So, basically, what you see here is without that, and it wouldn't take place this year. Whenever it starts, you have a year, in other words, new hires, you have a year at this rate, but we also participate in this wellness program, and you can be in it or not, but if you're not, if you don't participate, then it goes up $30 a month next year.
Or have them pay a co-pay or something, yeah?
Right.
All right. Any questions on fleet maintenance? Okay, did you have one out there?
Building maintenance, and we discussed this, the big controlling increase is the fact that there was two employees that their salaries were housed in utilities that have been appropriately placed in building maintenance, so that's a big driver of the change there. We have no proposals for new hires in this budget, and this time next year, that will be a normalized amount, meaning that the salary should not jump like they do here, but that's just an accounting, and of course, those salaries are no longer being billed out of utilities.
$943 was added to the communications line.
Okay.
Making the total 5,023. So, 943 added, and then the total's 5023 for that line. And then the grand total down at the bottom for that department is 509, 997.
There's another, oh, she's gone.
How many electricians were added?
Two.
Two to that department? And they came from the electric department?
That's right.
I see the electric department salaries went down 81,000, but they also, I mean, and that also, but that includes, I think there's a provision for 3% increase across the board in pay.
There was, that 1,600,000 could have included one of the electricians for partial year. Is that correct?
Yes.
He went over there the whole year.
So, Richard or Lance, well, Lance, I'll ask you, so, we basically had two electricians in the electric department spending all their time on building maintenance.
That is a fair statement, yes, sir.
So, if we were hypothetically, because it's come up, we had some work being looked at down on the pier, on the big pier, and so, would that be done through Public Works? And with these electricians, let's say they were looking at lights, they would be doing that, and as before, we'd have the electrical department go out there and look at that.
That is, that is where we're, that is correct. Basically, and I don't want to misspeak, but the desire of our utilities is that their responsibility needs to end at the meter, and our responsibility starts from the meter on. So, Lance has done a great job, he's got a plumber on board, like, we're self-performing the retrofit of the central bathroom at North Beach, doing all that work in-house, and so our hard costs are just the new fixtures and the ADA complacency, dividers and things of that nature. Lance and I had a discussion about, he's already been down coordinating with the contractor who's upgrading the service at the pier about how we then get the lights at the end of the pier and under the building fixed and all that, so, yes.
Council, do you have any questions about facilities, building maintenance?
They have a full load on, they've got every light bulb in the city, minus, if they're booked, so. The ears, one of those ears we hash it out, you've got distribution on the pier as well as secondary, so.
Okay. We got anything left with Public Works?
You guys, Public Works, you're covered.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
And you can say here, because we can talk now about, we're just going to go for general government, but also facility needs, and I'll need you to. But what I did is I passed out, if y'all can take this, one of the flyers is for balances, and our city fund, our city fund balances that can go towards capital projects, which also includes impact fees. So, what I did not include, hold on here, I want to deduct out impact fees, because they have specific designations for, of course, police, fire, transportation, parks. And I had this one here, but the flyer that I gave y'all does not. So, really, we're, under it says, total for city projects and maintenance, 8.1 million. Under that, total city projects and maintenance that can be spent is 4.5 million, roughly. What I have put together with Lance and Richard's help is just kind of where we are right now with our facilities, and this is taking, you know, basically looking at our facilities as if we kept them exactly the same and didn't really, you know, invest in anything. The only thing that's not in here, I think, is Valena Park expansion, which I'm going to have Pat White tell you about. But you have City Hall, that has a minimum, just with roof maintenance, awning replacement, $1.3 million, and we do have to look at this building and say, what do we want for the future, you know, because it's, we're investing a lot of good money into something that's, design-wise, not fitting our needs. We've outgrown office space, everything that we're putting into the budget every year are just Band-Aids on a very old grocery store. Public Works needs a new roof, and the maintenance at a bare minimum is $400,000. Police Patrol Precinct East, this is just an estimate to do basically a satellite office, which is needed because of the growth, $700,000. Welcome Center, we've already seen that proposal to do a lot more than this, but a bare minimum is $150,000. Quail Creek Clubhouse, it's just the roof now, but it all adds up. Nick Center, the fresh air intake needs to be replaced and the roofing associated with that, which is approximately $60,000. The Haven just finished the termite inspection, and so, building maintenance can go in and correct that damage, it also needs a new roof, $25,000. Parks and Rec's bathrooms need ADA compliant and upgrades, it's going to be $50,000 a year. If we weren't going to do it all at once, we'd have to do bare minimum $50,000 a year for five years. The rec building for the pool, it's structurally deficient, and that's going to be a minimum of $600,000 to redo that. And then with, I'd say with urgent needs for park, besides what's in the impact fee budget, which we'll get to in the second page, we've outgrown ballparks now, and we can either, I mean, council has voted to purchase Parkland for 2.65 million dollars. When you spend all of that upfront, how are you going to pay to build more, you know, ballparks? Can, you know, this sport survive, I don't know how many years, without doing anything, and so I'm going to bring Pat up to kind of talk about some of your ideas, and then Lance can answer other questions about some of the details. Again, these are bare minimum needs. If you take the Valena Park out, because some of that can be paid out of impact fees, you're looking at, conservatively, like I said, 3.5 million in, you know, maintenance needs that are critical. And just before I start, which you can go into too, but the capital projects that need to go into a plan are the K-1 center that we just purchased, and I think people want to move forward on that. We purchased the Pecan Building in 2013, and there's still no plan for it. I just, again, don't want this new ballpark to be the same. I mean, we can't continue to invest money and then have no money to actually have a future, short-term.
Mayor, if you don't mind me interrupting, Richard, what was the, didn't we get a structural analysis on that Pecan Building, what was the?
We did, and in prior, I need to, I'll get that out to all of y'all, I mean, after looking at it, the reality was, is that the baseline, what would require to make it meet today's code, it was not cost-effective to even pursue it.
It's a warehouse, that's where it is.
Yeah.
It'd be cheaper to tear it down and rebuild.
Yeah, that's just kind of, and.
I didn't mean to ask that, and Mayor mentioned that building.
You have to reskin it and add red iron to it all over the place.
And I will tell you one of the things, and we've not done, last night, I've not done a good service to the mayor here, but we at least got something to start with, we've kind of taken a cue from what Richard's been working on. We're going to take these facility issues and kind of put them into a five-year plan matrix. I do want to let you know that these are, most of these are issues that we've had on the burner, we know that it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when, and, you know, trying to come up with a game plan for this building that we know that we're kind of in limited time on its roofing system. It's got issues and it's not going to get better. We've patched and plugged Public Works and Public Utilities roof to the point where it's time-stop patching. We'll get this in a matrix and lay it out and try to identify as realistically with the best numbers that we can, because I know that y'all get tired of us showing up, and it's always now a crisis or emergency that we at least can.
That's what happens when everything's ignored for as long as it has.
Well, I will say, I added, I added the welcome center to capital projects, and the amount of, Robert said 300,000, I wrote that, had that figure written down, so I added that back to capital projects. And then on the Haven, this says 25,000, but I already had Haven in here for 15,000.
Okay. I think that the termite might not have been in there, just the roof.
This, it says termite damage out to the side.
Then it didn't have the roof.
It didn't have the whole roof.
It didn't have one of them.
Oh, okay.
It only had the front west side roofing above it.
But the other things we need to, like I said below, well, the capital projects needed to plan for did not show up on that flyer, but it's the Pecan Building, K-1 Center, first responder safe room, which we still don't have, and then just, you know, how we're going to think about the Civic Center, City Hall, USAs, lease coming up, I mean, we need to plan, or do we want to continue to sink money in that we will see no value, I mean, we won't see anything new, or do we need to look at? Or do we need to look at a facility that better suits our needs? I mean, it's, we have to start talking about it and putting it in a plan.
I definitely don't think we want to spend one point three million on a roof and awning for this building.
That's, all that is, are just things that have to happen quickly. It's not, in other words, that would be throwing money into something that you could invest and.
Right.
And that's just fixing the roof as it is, you know? It's not anticipating our future needs as far as if we did anything else to the building, when the roof might be affected, you know? So, looking into the future, we need to, before we spend this money, we need to make sure that that's what we want to do, is spend that amount of money on this roof.
I would rather be working on the, and this may not be a discussion for today for the budget.
But now, I mean, it's still to put out there.
But I would not want to spend a million three on a roof, patching the roof here.
When it could be invested in the K-1 or another thing, something else we could see.
Upgrade it. Right. And we've all, you know, the library took us all back on that eventual cost, but it had to be done. I sold the mayor's, I've had at least some of those in the trade that says that basic office space, it's not, not high-end, not fancy, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, new construction, especially if you're already on the land. So, if you took a million dollars and divided it by three hundred and fifty dollars, that's, I think, two thousand eight hundred square feet of new office space, you know? So, you, it's hard, it's hard to think about spending a million dollars on an existing building that you're, you're, you don't have enough use of as it is, that whereas you get something that's new, that has roof, it's going to last twenty-five years, and, you know, that kind of thing. And so, or if you had that million dollars to use to remodel and restore the K-1 Center and.
Or the Pecan Building.
Yeah, those are, well, I'm not sure.
I mean, not restore the Pecan, but start from scratch.
So, those are, you know, those are, I definitely think that we glad to work with y'all in any way, capacity, just to get guidance of which way do y'all want us to go so that we can at least bring you good information to at least ponder, so.
I think I want to digest this. I mean, there's a lot of things thrown in here. I've just kind of caught, you know, a few sentences here and there about, you know, Police Patrol Precinct East, seven hundred thousand. I mean, this is the first time it's been on paper, you know, some of these things.
Just a temporary office, you know? But, I mean, the police have outgrown their building, and it's a bottleneck. There's no question that we need to have a temporary office until we build into something bigger, just because it's not efficient to have everybody come down.
I just picked that one out because it was seven hundred thousand, and that's the first time we've seen it on paper.
But, that's what I'm saying, is when we're thinking about a strategic budget, these are things to consider because they are needs. And we, we've talked about, you know, a satellite office before. We haven't defined a price.
I'm not trying to debate. I'm just, nobody said we don't want to leave it on there. I got it.
Yeah.
What's the rec or structural efficiency?
Pretty much everything inside the Recreation Indoor Pool area, I don't mean to speak for you. Other than the main red iron, the heavy red iron beams, the pearlins, everything, they have just corroded to this, just nothing left. For example, the roll-up doors, the garage-type roll-up doors on the sides that they open up, there's nothing for us to fix anymore. And we don't have anywhere to bolt the framing for the rollers to roll. It's just, it's gone. We can't weld to it. I mean, there's nothing there. It's just hanging, and we're having to kind of make do. But that's something that we're going to have to address sooner than later.
I was telling Lance that the YMCA at Pollard and Westbury Pines had the same, same issue, and they literally disassembled the building off of the pool and built a brand-new one over. So, you know, so we don't know if, you know, hopefully, is there a building company that can come in and take the skins off, replace the girts, pearlins, and put it all back together? You know, so we, we picked a number that was cool out of the air because we really don't know what that's involved, but, you know, it's, the corrosion has been, and that building's been in existence how long?
I don't know that. No, I would, I would suggest conditioning that space the next go-around to make it last a lot longer.
Ventilation is what caused it, you know?
Ventilation, lack of ventilation. Lack of ventilation, humidity, and, you know, condensation, of course, corrosion.
Yeah, I would say that chlorine is probably one of the biggest culprits.
All right.
And, you know, redoing it and relocating, like you said, if it was cheaper to do that and expand it, impact fees could pay for a portion of it. And I wanted Pat to show y'all something because the kind of master plan that was looked at from the rec board a while back was building capacity for two more parks, I mean, two more ballparks.
According to this plan?
Not according to the new plan, but the old one. But it was still going to be pretty expensive because a lot of earth had to be moved, but you can take.
I printed visuals because it's a whole lot easier to explain by looking at it than it is to just explain offhand. But basically, our biggest needs at Valena, and I'm sure you all are aware of this, we need more field space. Right now, every age group is basically playing on one field, and that's practice and games. So, the other issue that we need to somehow address is parking. We have very little space on Friday nights for football games, and our largest event every year is graduation, so we're in much need of extra parking space. So, basically, looking at the overhead shot of the property, we have about five acres that is at the northeast corner, which would be on the boundaries of Greeno Road and basically Colonial Acres subdivision. It's all just open flat land right now, and it's used mostly for parking, for football, has been for years. So, in looking at that, we're trying to figure a way to configure putting four fields up there. The only way we could do that is to restructure all of our parking that's out in front and around the rec center, which we have a lot of wasted space up there currently. There's a lot of green space, a lot of trees and fencing, so there's just a lot of wasted space that could be better utilized for parking. What I did with these overhead shots is kind of mapped some stuff out. I figured that by restructuring that parking area, we could, we could come up with an additional, I say additional, but we should be able to create, create about five hundred to six hundred parking spaces in that area. So, the biggest thing is creating the four fields up there. If we were able to do that, that would give every age group two designated fields per age group. So, scheduling would be a whole lot easier on baseball. I've already met with Fairhope Youth Baseball. They are very much on board and excited about the potential of this. Basically, I just wanted to present it to you to get your consideration. Also, as far as addressing parking, if we were able to do this, we would do away with the front field, which is at the entrance of Valena, and create more parking there. And that was actually part of the master plan that's already been developed. And that would create an estimated four hundred and fifty spaces there.
And you said the five hundred, would we be, where, up here?
Right. Let's see, it's on this illustration, the last illustration?
Okay, gotcha.
Basically, this space here. So, the fields will be here, and the parking would be over here. And in this plan, we would still have room adjacent to the pool to expand in the near future.
Pat, this is not a new idea to put ballfields there. So, what were the, what were the, what was the pushback? Why were people resistant to it before? I mean, because this has been brought, I mean, I think Councilman Brown even brought this up, I don't know, a year ago, two years ago?
The biggest thing was parking. They were just afraid we were giving up too much space for Friday night football parking, but.
Practice space.
But in looking at all the space that's not utilized in front and adjacent to the rec center, like I said, there's a lot of trees, a lot of fencing there that kind of sets a boundary. There's a, there's a big oval space with a drive around it. Basically, that oval's never used.
Right. And if you look at the, and if you look at that aerial, it really tells how much, you know, better that could be.
Right.
And you could still have pervious parking.
And you did, the question I'd heard when I first heard, you did leave the room to the north of the pool to be.
Yes, sir.
Expanded upon. Let me ask you this, now, I'm kind of nitpicking now, but the, the fields, would they literally be, you know, drawn in those corners? Because I think the most efficient, you know, is that kind of clover leaf design where you have a central press box, and then you also have stands that are kind of central.
That's correct.
Huntsville, I can think of Huntsville Sports Plex, have you seen that?
Right. And that's the way I'd like to see that done. Obviously, this illustration does not do that in justice.
Okay, good. I was hoping you didn't endorse that, because I think it could be a lot more efficient. That might feel a lot better.
No, I would rather have them four in a circle with a press box, concessions in the center.
Yeah, right.
And this, this estimate would be, and of course, this could be fully paid out of impact fees, was just over, is that in here?
Eighty-five, eighty-five.
Okay, sorry.
One point.
This was emailed to me on the little pages, everything else.
Especially what I come up with, rough, rough guesstimate. Obviously, a lot of the field construction could be done in-house with our personnel. Lighting, that's a pretty, pretty accurate figure. We've already talked to Musco about lighting the two fields that we had talked about, expanding down on the other side of Valena currently, so that's a pretty accurate figure. Restructuring parking and landscaping, that, you know, basically take a shot at that.
And that included for the restructuring over there, the, the big field at Valanta Rock Hill?
And I'll say restructuring, you're talking about taking the first field out here.
What's that?
When y'all talk about restructuring.
Yeah, that one right there. Yeah, that one right there. And all of that area could use some work because, you know, huge pulling there, one car pulls in, in the drive, and they park there.
Right.
Nobody can get in.
Right.
With organized parking, I think you're going to really, really increase the capacity with the added front parking. Again, it just needs to be organized. And then also look at the shuttle. That's what Daphne's doing now. Is it Daphne?
Spanish for.
Spanish for, I'm sorry. Because I think a lot of people wouldn't participate in that.
Where are they shuttling them from?
I mean, you'd have to find.
They park them at the high school, and then they shuttle them up the hill to the football facility.
We'd have to determine.
There's no parking for both fields itself, or?
It might be one of the parking lots, but, and also the bands are coming by bus, so that'll help a little bit, too.
So, basically, this would help us get things moving rather quickly. Obviously, we have maintenance facility on site. We have the equipment and the manpower on site, so we would, you know, be able to get this project going pretty quickly and get baseball what they need in a quicker manner.
What would be the turnaround time to actually have completed fields, would you expect?
Field-wise, you know, we could pull that off, you know, in six to eight months. But, you know, obviously, the amenities, the facilities and stuff of that nature, you know, lighting would all have to be scheduled, and so I couldn't, I couldn't tell you a timeframe on that, to be honest with you.
With four new fields, could you, could you eliminate night games with four new fields in that age group initially? You'd still have lighted fields at Valanta, but maybe not at this new location.
I don't know. I don't know. That's an interesting question.
You're talking about, you know, an hour a game, four fields, you know, from eight to, you know, six PM in the summer.
At least to transition, that would be good.
Yeah, you could transition. You could save that at least a year.
Quite possibly.
And, and just have day games there. I would think that it would relieve the congestion enough to do that. Also, thinking, you know, you'd probably have to put some design fees in here. I know, probably a hundred and fifty thousand.
Probably two million dollars. But it is going to take you a year to get drawings and engineering done before you do anything.
Probably. To get it all, to get it all to flow, especially with the parking and the.
I definitely think this needs to be more experience, laying all the details out, but I do like that you can at least see what is possible, because I think it would be.
I would think we'd have put that, you know, definitely get those fees in the budget to draw something up. It's got to be done. That'd be probably step one, right?
Mm-hmm. Since we didn't go about it, we didn't try to build and then design it. But that worked.
So, while we're on projects, just for a second, if, if y'all could look at the screen, because I did make these changes, and it actually did help the bottom line, and I know this hasn't come before you yet, and y'all can obviously take it out, but this is the approval on the MPO meeting that y'all be, that's coming up on the 10-28 meeting. But this is going to be the revenue coming in for that MPO project on the Gafer and Greeno turn lanes, the 594, 726, which will be added to revenue. And then I've added the expense, the full expense down at the bottom for seven hundred and forty-three thousand, four oh seven. And I'm just pointing out these changes right now, so y'all have everything you need to make your decisions. But the Fly Creek Marina Seawall, it was originally in there for five hundred. Richard seemed to think that it was going to be, or it, or it did come, come way below that, so we dropped that to three hundred, added three hundred for the Welcome Center. And he got word that this transportation and pedestrian infrastructure, we could drop that down to a total of one eighty. So, that's now the loss on the capital projects on page twenty-two. It's one oh three.
That loss just went down a hundred thousand?
Well, you added that half a million dollar revenue up at the top.
Did, does anybody know if Richard Johnson left? Richard, are you outside? Can you hear me? Is that playing?
Mr. Peterson, I don't know. And Mayor, you might be able to answer this. While you're on that, I need to point something out. So, we got word that we got that A-Trip Two project money for the Gafer turning lanes, but Richard Johnson and I were talking, that wasn't the, on the priority, the priority was down at Twin Beach.
Right.
And we're really wondering, before we keep saying Gafer, if they didn't mean.
I know. I have the update.
Twin Beach on that. And I actually called Senator Elliott's office to, and he said it came from another senator that's on that committee from somewhere in North Alabama that stated that to him. So, there's a little bit of.
Confusion?
Yeah, maybe just on our part, because we were told Gafer, but it, it may actually be Twin Beach.
Okay, I have.
And I don't know if that changes the numbers. They're not the exact same dollar amount, so it might.
Right, right, no. And he did point out that it was, it was Gafer. I've, I've got the email right here.
It was announced at the MPO meeting that it was Gafer, but we are not a hundred percent certain that that was correct.
Okay. And so, we need to get that clarified.
That's, the, the Twin Beach was going to be an MPO-funded project.
Right.
So, what he was announcing was, I thought, for the Highway Safety Improvement Program.
But I thought that they were both going to be MPO-funded, and they just actually took one away and said, yeah, we'll fund it, which was great.
Only one, only one was MPO-funded, and that was the Twin Beach.
So, that points back to Gafer, which I'll be honest, they both need it badly.
They both need it.
They both need it badly.
And both based on this, we hopefully will get approval sometime this month on, well, that's, that's why I wish he could come in, because he knows all the details.
For budgeting purposes, I don't know if there's a hundred or two hundred thousand dollar, you know, difference maybe, and that's why we need to know for certain. If it's, if it's Gafer.
to know for certain. If it's, if it's Gafer, I'm not opposing that.
What he sent, what he sent to me with the resolution was Gafer.
Yeah, I'm, I've got it pulled up right here on my phone. It is Gafer and Greeno is what he sent earlier.
The Twin Beach, we already knew was gonna be our very first NPO-funded project, actually, in its history.
Well, for here, we did the, we did the, uh, adaptive signaling.
Right, more of a regional, everybody participated, but yes.
Did somebody say he's there? Did somebody?
No, sir, he's gone.
No problem. Just, just wanted to put that out there and not create more confusion, but it was questionable. Do we have any more departments?
Um, yeah, water and sewer.
Water and sewer, right.
Uh, you're like, uh, please? Thank you.
Oh, well, I thought we had one more, but when we got over on the rec, I wasn't sure. Well, maybe I'm missing something.
And what, I think, as far as general government, though, was there anything else that we needed to go over, Jill? Because we really didn't have one for general government, but everybody, for the most part.
How do we kind of, sort of, I don't think we've really gone over general admin, like, zero, zero, ten.
Right. I mean, we, y'all talked about the new employee you wanted.
Right, here and there. I think I did have some.
I don't think we have any. I took that out.
Well, you took one of them out. There's still two in there.
Oh, but it's, yeah, I don't wanna think of as I D, a customer service manager. Right. I mean, that is under him, but it's, it's a small salary. Should we go over that real quick? I mean, 'cause that'll be the last of it, and then.
Right.
Because there's not much to it.
Right.
Okay. You wanna do that? Back to general government.
Can we step back?
No.
Okay.
Zero, zero, one, one hundred is the. And like I said, I know that communications line has changed, um, to fifteen thousand nineteen was taken out and reallocated among the general fund departments, and it's all in munis. Um, and then, under professional services, twelve thousand dollars was added for the NASPO Value Point Master Agreement. And Mayor, you can explain what that is. That's that purchasing, the NASPO that you sent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now, I didn't know the name of it. This is, um, a company that's, that does work for the state. They have a program. I should just get the flyer real quick. Carry on, and I'm gonna get the flyer. I can better communicate.
I mean, I can, I can pull it up on my screen if you want me to.
I've got my notes and stuff.
Okay. But that's what that twelve thousand dollars is.
Where's that, what's that on again?
It's on page, um.
On page three, right?
Yeah, page three, professional services.
Zero, zero, one, one, zero, zero.
Right. Um, added twelve thousand to professional services.
So that number's a hundred and fifty-two now?
Yes, one fifty-two, five. And then on communications.
Which is the comp study. What's the one twenty for the comp study? What, I thought we, um, the second phase of the comp study. What's, what was the cost on phase one, do you recall?
Um, I wanna say it was sixty-something, but, but it didn't.
Sixty, sixty-five is what I had in my head. And so that's already.
Well, it didn't materialize. Like, we haven't paid anything on that yet.
Okay.
So that's all gonna be hit in twenty, yes.
But it's not part of that one twenty?
Yes, it is.
So.
Both, for both years.
Sixty, and then sixty.
Right.
For phase two.
Right.
So phase one and two.
That's right, no, that's correct, right.
Even if it says phase two, but that's phase one and phase two.
That's right.
Got it. I see it here in the detail.
Okay, and then on communications, there was fifteen thousand nineteen, that was backed out. So you can make that number, um, forty thousand, eight, forty-one. And that's all that's been done to general admin.
Jill, while we're looking at this, I don't know if I brought this up before. The sale of fixed assets, why did that number jump up by a hundred and fifty thousand?
Where is?
Two hundred thousand.
So I don't, okay, right here. Um, they are turning those old assets over left and right, um, on a, um, those are the gov deals, yes, surplus. Um, they've on a very tight schedule, um, and they've just gotten better and better and better at, at getting rid of all those old. And the two hundred thousand actually is probably gonna have to be reallocated among, I mean, it's probably not gonna be much, but it's gonna be reallocated among the different general fund departments, as well as the utilities. Um, I didn't really bother to put, um, a revenue over in the utilities, only because they just, there's probably not much that's gonna happen over there. Um, but that two hundred is pretty much for the whole city, and as, as we get it, it's allocated to whatever department it came out of.
It was just a factor, it's gone up, I mean.
Right.
A factor of five.
I'm just gonna talk quickly about this, um, business. It, it, did you say it was Sine, Sarah? Is that the?
NASPO, N-A-S-P-O.
Okay, so, anyway, this is, and I'll pass this around, but basically, they, this professional service helps with the procurement process. They've, um, helped NASA, the state, and they're, they're a national company. Um, but they're gonna help with, um, the different ways we can do RFPs, 'cause sometimes we might want, a lot of these things I've never heard of, but if I put this in the budget now, I'd rather him come and explain how he would streamline the process of procurement for us. It's basically that they help us make sure that we have the processes in place to make, sure there's no repeats of what I feel like are some bureaucratic things that we have right now in our process. Um, they have, that they're basically setting up an acquisition planning ass- assessment and, and training for everybody in the departments that, that work mostly in procurement. I mean, pretty much every department does. Let's see here. This, I think this could be contingent on him coming and doing a presentation, similar to what he did for me, Richard Johnson, and I think, Kim, did you, okay, Kim, can you explain it any better than I can, from what he, he spent quite a bit of time with us?
You know, my understanding is, he, as a consultant, he would come in and look at our processes and see, and, you know, how we could streamline, and, and the other side is his, his background is federal government. And, um, I did ask the question, has he, has he worked for any, um, Alabama's, you know, city or county? He has not. He's trying to work with the, get on with the state.
I thought that he said he did work for the state.
He, he's trying to get his foot in the door in, in the state, was my understanding, but it was trying to, you know, be able to come in and look at our processes and be able to see if there's some things that we can streamline. And actually, and help on federal contracts, you know, that would be one thing that the specialty is on the federal side, too.
I think that, was it that they're listed now on the, a state? 'Cause I thought that was one of the things we talked about in the beginning, was they're kind of approved for a state-level contract.
Yeah, I understand he was working, he was trying to work with the state to try to get to there, in the state of Alabama.
I definitely think it's worth looking into, because that will pay off big time and efficiency. And that's something we are lacking in that department.
Jack, real quick, back to your sale of fixed assets, that actually includes seventy carts being sold at two thousand dollars apiece for a hundred and forty thousand, so I had slipped my mind.
All right. What else did you want to point out on this?
Mayor, what, what in particular, um, other than, you know, some of the personnel, did, did you wanna go over in general admin? Okay.
Added otherwise, just some of the things that y'all wanted, personnel-wise.
Okay.
I think everything else was defined in each department.
Right.
Update.
I mean, is, if there's anything that, you know, jumps out at you in this general admin, we can definitely go over it, page three and four.
Jill, I've got a note to myself. It says, C O O one, one hundred, line one twenty. Where is line one twenty? I must've looked at it on my computer.
Line one twenty.
Do you know where Mayor, say line one twenty?
Um, say that again, zero, zero, one, one hundred.
Right. And I've got a note that says line one twenty.
One twenty. Uh, that's, you're talking about in the salaries?
Is that it?
Mm-hmm. I think so. That is, um, put in for the city administrator.
Okay, that is what I had in there. What was that note, too?
Oh, well, that is the main, yes, the main, um, help that has, um, not been funded this term is a city administrator, and even if it's not this term, I mean, it's something that, if we've had that position, and I sent the organizational charge to show y'all what this person was over, it was over administrative departments, that this is, is something that is, has been missing this term that has been in place since two thousand one. And most cities this size have some sort of full-time city administrative position. It doesn't have to necessarily be called city administrator, but it's.
All right, I'm, I'm, once again, I'm not gonna argue with you, Mayor, but we, you know, we, we had one city administrator. The other administrator that you're calling an administrator was not an administrator. They did not carry out the day-to-day operations of the city whatsoever. They may have been the mayor's right-hand man, whatever you wanna call it, but they were not a city administrator.
I showed the organizational charts of what the departments they were over.
And I, I mean.
It, it was the day-to-day operations of those departments.
I have a pretty intimate knowledge of what they did day-to-day, and it was not, uh, running the day-to-day operations of the city. So I, I said, I don't, I only point this out, counsel, because that's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar expense. It may or may not exist, plus all the benefits and medical and, and everything else, so, um, you know, if we, if we looked for ways to reduce the budget, that's one that's, that's one that's in there. And I guess, it, you know, since we're on that subject of salaries, is I don't know, Jill, that we've received an entire list of all the employees and, and their pay, like we, we've received in the past. And, uh, we, we need, we need that to, to look at that.
Well, I think that now, if we've got, what I want to, to do while y'all are all here, is spend time on when you want to meet again for amendments, and then we can get a complete budget book also, because that's, that's what we wanted to avoid printing the whole thing, until those adjustments.
Right.
But if we can get just that, maybe, I mean, if it's, I thought, I saw something in this.
Well, there's a list of positions and, uh, you know, new positions throughout, but we don't have that, that overall list of, of employees that we've had in the past. So I, I think that we do need to, to look at that, and if we can, can get that.
Of overall employees.
It's, it's employee by employee, but that huge, huge, huge spreadsheet.
Okay.
We have personnel requests. We have a sheet of personnel requests.
Yeah, I thought it was the person, I mean.
Well, that's where the salary numbers come from.
Oh, okay.
Exactly.
Is that in munis?
No. That's a Bloomberg Excel spreadsheet.
Do y'all wanna look at calendars? Because tomorrow is October first, and we can just go over addition, what we still have to do. Water and sewer, but I think before they get finished, before they get finished, let's look and see when y'all wanna do amendments.
Why don't we go water and sewer and let these people go? Let's, let's stick to that right now.
I do not want to forget to set the meetings for amendments.
We will, we will be setting up a meeting. We will not leave without setting up a meeting.
Okay.
Guarantee you, we'll not go home like that.
Does, does everybody in the council, all the council know Tim Manuel? He's our, um, chief sewer plant operator, and he and Curtis Cooper were instrumental in putting this together. And I would have just gone to record that if you like the budget, they did a great job. If you don't like the budget, they had nothing to do with it.
Right.
What would you like to start with? Water or sewer?
Uh, let's just start with water, since it's page twenty-eight, and then it's page twenty-nine. And let's look at that, uh, you know that number off the top of your head for those following the computer.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight and zero, zero, four, zero, ten.
And Jay's not giving himself enough credit. He's spent an awful lot of time working through this budget as well. And I'm grateful to all of them.
Along with answering calls and everything else.
All right. Do you wanna start with where we were at, or where we're going?
The numbers are not adding in.
Um, well, I went in just, um, before the meeting and kind of verified. Um, and there was one or two places where it was taking the three percent on a brand-new position. So on that salaries figure, it's now eight forty-two, nine fifty-four. And then it affected the taxes only by two hundred and sixty-three dollars. They went down.
And what I'm, on, uh, when I pulled that up, zero, zero, four, zero, one, zero?
Yes.
That's a little off.
It's got, our council totals, five point eight million, and where it, well.
Five point eight million?
On the, on paper.
Yeah, on paper.
On, on here, it's showing like a loss of one point seven.
If you look at, uh.
Or is it that, is this the zero, zero, the zero, 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 two?
No, no, it's zero, zero, four. Do you have it right from there?
I think the problem is that, um, net income loss for water is not showing, um, on the page twenty-eight. I think that's the, the problem. Let's see. So over on, should be three point one, six, zero, four, nine, five. Seven, four, nine, oh, two. Oh, um, you have to, in munis, page twenty-eight does not include all the capital, remember? And in munis, it does. So you've gotta take out, in munis.
All the capital expenses.
The capital, yeah, and the system improvements, um, and then it should equal what's on paper.
One point, five, one point one.
And that's listed over on the. And that's listed over on the utility cash flow, um, sheet. If you look over there. Um, that is page...
And then those are combined.
Twenty-four.
Page twenty-four, and those are, let's see.
All right. Water and sewer. Well, they're separated up top on the cash flow, but when you get to the bottom, uh, the net earnings are combined together. Um, the only thing that I did add here is another line that says reserve requirements per ordinance. Um, Kim and I work together, but, um, there's nine hundred and sixty thousand that needs to come out of electric, and then six hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred that comes out of water and sewer. And then I had to increase that, um, line of credit because it made the, the deficit worse. So, if you look up at the screen, that's what we've got now. I see. There we go. It's this line right here. And then this one has also, also had to change to balance. The net earnings is going to change just a little bit by the amount of that, that salary change over in water and sewer. I just didn't go back and... Because every time you mess with it, this changes. But as far as where everything is, you can find the capital on this cash flow. Sorry, utilities are confusing. Actually, it's the general fund that's wacky.
So, we've got an additional one point five million dollar deficit that's not on page twenty-four.
I think that's right.
Right, from the reserve requirements.
When you look at that water and sewer fund, paying line of credit slash short-term loan to three point, roughly three point six million. And I may have had this answer already. I don't remember. How much of that, or is any of that going to be covered by Restore Act funds or infrastructure improvements?
I don't know that any of it is.
I don't think so either. I think we said it wasn't.
I think these are transmission upgrades that don't qualify under the current definition of what the Restore Act does for us now. You know, we've got some rehabilitation work, and we just talked...
Restore Act's only new capacity or?
No, the rehabilitation will be the aging infrastructure, and we've, now we've met with them and I, I think I sent y'all...
This, I thought this was, I thought you just said, maybe I misheard you. I thought you said this is aging infrastructure. The number on this sheet?
Most of those are transmission upgrades.
Okay, I'm sure.
The, uh, but, but we do have, uh, commitments from the Restore Act, uh, funding for some of the side-stream storage capabilities that we're trying to incorporate.
But not the ones that have already been proposed.
Yeah, the ones...
We don't want to wait.
We're bidding, uh, just the vessels. We're bidding three vessels, uh, week after next, and will be, uh, hopefully...
There are seven total you're talking about.
Seven, potentially seven, and, and we're, we're bidding three that will have, you know, a, a vessel in the southern sector, and the eastern sector, and the northern sector of, of the system in general, so we can back flows up from all those three sectors. Those are the three critical ones, I would say, to, to get us by, you know, for the next spring rain season and, and next year. But we'll be using the Restore Act money to retrofit those into, uh, an integrated system that works with the plant. And we'll be looking at adding, you know, potentially three or four more. Uh, and the chart I handed out to y'all kind of gave you a snapshot of the last rain event we had and, and the capacities that we'd be able to store, which didn't quite meet what we would like to create in a, in a levelized flow to the plant. So, you know, we're, we're still at a little bit of a deficit for that particular type of rain event, but and, and, you know, no matter what we do, there will be potentially something that, that comes, whether it be the April thirtieth rain event of two thousand fourteen, that, you know, we're going to struggle with anyway. But I don't think we can design everything for the worst-case scenario, and that's not what we're trying to do at all.
Every time we do it, fires us a...
There'll be another one after. That's right.
Definitely ongoing.
So, we're, I think we're trying to apply what's practical and what i- is something that we can manage, and that's, that's where we are with that. But then there'll be another rehabilitation of the infrastructure, and, um, that will be some of the, the work we're doing now, and, and we'll be continuing at a little accelerated pace with the Restore.
So, let's go to the, the, and that electric fund. The same sheet, it showed, uh, it shows a loss of, uh, two point, roughly two point six million. Can you get that screen back to?
Yes.
With the system upgrades and capital projects in the electrical, uh, fund of six point eight five million. Now, is, are we, to take that, if that's all a twenty-twenty-year expense?
I think the twenty-twenty's going to be closer to four and a half, and, and I think, uh, we'll be looking at a total of eleven to twelve over the next two and a half, three years. But we're, but I think four and a half may be what we're targeting for this fiscal year.
Yeah, realistically, I think the, the six point eight is what was proposed as far as cash flow requirements in your five-year plan. So, that's what we use.
For the total, all, all infrastructure.
Realistically, yes, probably more like four and a half. Um, and what I'll do, when we, when I go and reprint all this, I think what I'll do, just, you know, so y'all can tie things back together better for the utilities, I'll go ahead and add back those capital expenditures on pages twenty-five through, um, twenty-nine. I'll still have the cash flow as is, but that way, um, it'll, it will balance to munis, and I think that ma- make y'all's life a little easier. Sorry, I didn't do that before, but live and learn.
All right. Back to that, that budget now. Counsel, do y'all have any questions for staff on the water fund? Just jumping out at you.
I will say this, you know, seventeen and a half years I've been here, the last fourteen months have been the busiest. I won't bore you with this. There are about forty pages of the single-line thing that Tim and I worked out. These are the stuff that we took out of inventory this year, this fiscal year, totaled three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. You know, we don't expect that to be an every-year thing. The growth is tremendous. The other is what we bought external of it, which is on a P O through the water, and it forks out to about a hundred and twenty-three. It all adds up to the five, twelve that you see. We went back and looked at, you know, where we should be, where we should, you know, where we're not. Uh, you know, a thousand and one things happened this year. I think I told the city council about, uh, last year, this time, that there'd be unintended consequences of having to pump, you know, maximum amount of water, and we're running eight-seven, uh, for the last month. Eight, eight point seven million gallons average every day. You know, you could do about nine maximum. And when we're doing that, keep in mind that that water is moving rapidly, you know, it's being used. And, you know, there's a lot of stopping and going. Everybody turns on the irrigation at six o'clock in the morning, they turn it back off. You know, unintended consequence of that, we have a broken main almost a day. Almost a day I have a broken main. Especially through the end of the summer. This all adds up. It all adds up on our overtime. The other unintended thing that, uh, the thing that's gone up is we can't have lead anymore in our brass fittings, and the cost of that's gone up tremendously. And we use a lot of it. That's all we use. Uh, rarely do we use any cast iron fittings anymore because the ground's so acidic. Get about ten years of use out of it, and, you know, it comes apart. So, these are some of the things that we're going to struggle with, as long as this growth stays like it is. But once the growth settles out, and we can get a handle on, you know, the amount of fixtures you're using, you know, then we can probably, you know, get a little bit more accurate on the budget. I don't expect it to be this kind every year. But I did want to point out that, you know, we didn't take any of this stuff home.
Counsel, most of the, the difference in the, um, in the revenue projections, I'm, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. You know, the revenue projections seem to be reasonable. They're, they're down from the projected actuals.
Well, that's, um, that's August, so we still have this month.
What's that?
That's, if you look at the actual, it's for August. We still have this month to account for that.
I think their projection is twelve months.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
And they're probably going to beat that pretty well if it's dry as it's been.
Yeah, that's my point.
I'm thinking everybody's having a pretty darn good, uh, pretty good August and September.
I think, yeah, the revenue should be up for the last two or three months of the fiscal year. And one thing we're doing too is going through account by account, basically, and looking at where we've had some zero usages for an extended period of time, and we're, and we're looking to capture some of that and, and replacing meters that are worn out. So, and we, we feel pretty good about capturing a little additional revenue through that process.
We're, we're, I think we're at about, almost a thousand meters changed out this year, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per pop. You're looking at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars right off the top before it did anything. Which all creates our revenue. I'm just, you know, these are certain things we didn't plan on.
Your two big line items on your expenses, it went down in the transfers from general fund, two forty-six, and the transfers for our community development, which went down about four fifty. Four fifty, four forty. So, that's, that's your, your big difference in your, in your expenses. Everything else, pretty close to being, uh, the same.
All right.
Well, we are trying hard, and, and the, uh, the model that we've got with Jacobs is complete to some degree, and we've done some field tests to try to verify some of the numbers with that. Once we get that done, we'll be looking at different locations where we can add a little bit of a transmission capacity here and there, and we'll be coming back with some of the, uh, improvements that we'd like to make to incorporate the transmission needs we have to, to boost, in some cases, the production we can do on a daily basis, and in, in other cases, to prevent some of the excess pressure we see on the system that's causing some of these leaks as well.
Can you talk to us a little bit about your, uh, your personnel request? That's, uh, from, uh, from budget, not from actual, it'd be more than that, but actual, but up from budget by almost eleven percent.
We need all the help we can get.
There's two, water service tech, one's budgeted in water. Um, there's one promotion. I believe it works out to be like a dollar an hour. And then the field operations, um, I don't...
All right, so what we've had in the past is, is we've had an assistant who was me for eight years, and we don't have an assistant, and so, um, I'm not trying to cry, but every day I get in, and the first thing I do is I have to go get the construction crew going. There's, there's not a manager for the construction crew, which is a big part of all this. And then I spend the day off and on checking on them and stuff like that, and it takes away from, you know, what my predecessor did before us, you know, trying to manage the overall department. So, um, I want to look real hard at either, at least giving, uh, this department an assistant, um, and possibly, you know, somebody to run the, uh, construction. I've been fortunate that Curtis and Tim, when I go on vacation, try to manage this department when I'm not here. It's asking an awful lot on them because they have their own departments, uh, to manage. But, uh, we need to do something. You know, I'm, I'm working about fifty-five hours a week, and I'm, and I'm okay with that, uh, but it can't, you know, it can't, I'm fifty-nine, I can't keep it up forever.
Well, and here's the reason I ask. I mean, anytime I see, you know, and, and we may be, you know, playing catch-up, okay? We may be playing catch-up, but sooner or later, we got to catch up, and we can't have, the city might be growing fast, but it's not growing at eleven percent a year.
No, I agree a hundred percent.
I have to ask.
It doesn't bother me at all.
The number of full-time people in utilities has not increased, though. I mean, it's net neutral. So, there's, there's no catching up in the utilities.
I don't, I, I certainly don't mind you asking.
Well, the personal request of being, and there's, uh, there are three positions that were being requested.
Right, yeah. One's a field operations supervisor, the manager of construction, and then two to work in it. You know, it, uh, I think everybody here is well aware of how much overtime, you know, the construction department's going through, and that's why our turnover rate is what it is. And it, you know, it costs money to have a turnover. I, I think that somebody quoted like eighty-three hundred dollars to hire somebody new by the time we do all that. You know, I think that if we didn't...
Seventy percent of the salary.
Okay.
So, it depends on the salary.
All right. There you go.
The benefit cost is the same whether they're making thirty-five thousand or they're making seventy-five thousand.
Well, we're just, you know, if we could, we'd just get a few more people, uh, you know, to spread the work around a little bit. I mean, you know, there's been several times this year where we had people on the job sixteen hours, eighteen hours, twenty hours. Uh, I was there too. It makes your stomach hurt. You worry about the long-term effects, and the long-term effects on, on, you know, people don't stay. You know, this is a great place to work. Um, it's never been as good as it is right now, thanks to everybody at this table. I'm not trying to win anything. But again, people are not going to stay when the work is disoverwhelming.
I count twelve new people in utilities total.
For this budget.
For this budget.
Right. I mean, that, this, this was really just about, with everything that we, we have going on and all the infrastructure upgrades, I mean, this is what's in it to, um, to go forward on the, this much-needed work, and it's also been adjusted in, uh, for the labor cost adjustment, so.
One of, one of the things that, um, was extremely helpful that you gave us last year, you gave us...
That's a good point.
You gave us, in the sewer, and I want to use this for example, you gave us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do upgrades. And we didn't get quite all of it used, and I didn't ask for the whole amount back, but what that did is that saved the city a ton of money. When you look at five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to put a lift station in, you know, and part of that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for the, um, panel. Now, we, we built the panel at South Sexy Street out of the money you gave us for under ten thousand dollars, and it's state-of-the-art. Uh, I'm an electrician by trade. We have an electrician that works for us. It didn't cost you any labor. And that's why, you know, you know, us working together, getting that, and I've asked for that, the water this time, because there are electric panels at well five, excuse me, and at well one that we're going to have to upgrade, and we're going to have to make them workable, um, you know, from a field standpoint. And I'll be more than happy if you ever want to see what we get from a company for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars versus what our electrician builds at a tenth of the cost. And that's what we're using some of that money for. We're also using that money in the sewer to replace aging pumps. We see a return on that immediately, um, with, you know, the pumps not running as long, uh, not much, um, electricity. We had a pump at the Doghouse, which is a T-eight, that cost us nine thousand dollars. It was running, um, in the morning and not shutting off until about noon, uh, when it came on. The other pump was coming on and off, and so when we replaced that pump, we have a normal operating cycle. It's ten minutes on, eight or ten minutes off, swap it back and forth, you know. And the meantime, between failure, will go up dramatically too. Um, we can't have that pump and that, that, that motor just run, run, and run. So, that's money that you gave us that, you know, is turning, returning dividends, and that's why we asked for it, and you'll see that we asked for that for upgrades, I think, one twenty-five, uh, on this year's budget. I promise you, you will make that money back.
Questions for water? Still a waste of water.
So, I do want to point out a couple of just very minor changes, um, kind of same thing... thing. When I went back and I was looking over the salaries, um, 2,400 can be deducted off of salaries, which I know is not much. Um, and then the payroll tax is $183. So.
All right. Uh, would you like to start with what I want or what we did? Uh, I don't think that what I want is, excuse me?
What you absolutely need.
Okay. All right. That's fair enough. Uh, what I did was, is I brought this to your attention so you can see why I'm asking for it. I'm asking for, I've heard, uh, you know, people talk about a wish list. And what I wish is we would have done this earlier. Uh, so it would not come due. All right. So, I'm sorry. So we have a UV system. Everybody knows that the UV system at the plant, we have two of them. Uh, they're very important ones to backup. Uh, they're called a Classic 4000 and a 4000 plus.
That's a disinfection system of the F-line.
Are you all aware of that?
We don't use chlorine. We use UV.
I, I think they're all aware of that.
Yeah.
All right. So we have two systems. Um, the 4000 plus is the newest one that was put in, uh, a year or two after I got here at 16 years old. Uh, the Classic is 23 years old. These have a life expectancy of 20 years. Now, I, I'm not here to scare you. I'm here to just tell you the facts. There's gonna be a time in the very near future where they're not gonna make parts for that anymore and it'll just be there. Um, so we need to think that 400,000, the 405, it's actually $40,000 less. They said if we ordered it this year, we won't even get it for a year. Not, if you want to look at trying to do something else, but keep in mind, and this is very, very important, and this is to your, directly to your question, that if we lose, if the Classic 4000 goes down, what they do now is if we need a motherboard for it, if we need something special, they build it and send it to us a few weeks later. If the 4000 plus goes down at the same time, we do have chlorine backup, but it's not sitting there. It's not automatic. We can't make it automatic. In fact, up until last year, it wasn't even on our permit anymore, but Tim worked hard to get it on our permit. So we can use that because when you use chlorine, not to send here an hour and talk to you about sanitation. But when we use it, we have to also make sure that we're not using too much and we have to compensate for that. And there's an ebb and flow that we have to go through. So we don't want to go back to it. But if we have a problem, you'll have untreated, you'll have partially treated sewer going out, which we will have to, uh, sign for. And it, a few minutes is a lot when you're doing 3 billion, two and a half million gallons a day. 10 or 15 minutes is a ton of, of, of fluid going out there. So, uh, this came to our attention. We talked about it last year. Uh, we had some other things that we wanted to purchase with the Cameron stuff. So, um, I don't know how we get around this. Even if we push it back a year or two, we're pushing it back two years or three years because it takes a year to get in. It takes a year to be built, has to be built for the silo that we have now, the trough we have now. So it's a one-off. And so if we push that, then we're pushing it two years, not just a year. I wanted to make it sure that everybody was aware of it. They're not on the shelf. All right?
So did you say the 405,000 could be reduced?
About 40,000. They give us a 10% break if we buy it this year for some reason, but I'll take what I can get.
But when it is received and installed, it's gonna increase your capacity by 2 million gallons.
It will. It will.
We, that, we can, um, flow 12 million to, in the same exact spot. The new technology.
Just because of technology upgrades?
It's not just the technology. I'm sorry. It's not just the technology. It's the way it's set up. It's the way it's laid in there. Right now, uh, I'd love for you guys to come down and look at, but it comes up and there's, there's the, and it goes into a cubby hole. This one will be like, uh, a set of cards and a deck of cards and it'll go through it. And we can pull it out. It's a thousand times easier to work on. And so, um, now the combo truck, um, again, when you look at the meantime between failure, I have a note here somewhere saying that we spent $32,000 just on it today. It's, uh, over 20 years old or right at 20 years old. Um, we have a $12,000 bill waiting to see what we're gonna do with it. Uh, it's not getting any easier. Hey, look at this. This is what it looks like. This is what that would look like. Um, so I, you know, if you want to break that combo truck up over a couple of years, just know that, uh, not only does the combo truck, um, cost us because it's broke, but it's also cost us because when we bought it, we weren't this big. And so it can't do as much work. So I just spent $6,000, uh, the city just spent $6,000 for one project with SIS cleaning a line that had collapsed out at Lakewood Golf Course. Our truck just did not have enough power to get it done. So there's not just the fact, and we will keep that truck as a backup. No, because we don't have one as a backup. Uh, there's a couple of smaller expenditures in here. Uh, there's a service truck I have that's got 100, almost 200,000 miles on it. And, um, the Winkham request, uh, is a software changeover that we're requesting that you approve. Um, the software that was purchased, the camera truck, which none of us had anything to do with, none of us here, um, is not, is not, nobody uses it. And so I can't. There's only one company out of California that services it. They're out in California. They're not very helpful. And we can't transfer the mapping to the GIS system, uh, with any efficiency. We're basically putting it on there and then bringing it in and they're redrawing it when they get there. It's, instead of just being able to export it and import it, you can't do it because this idiotic software just doesn't do that. Nobody caught that. Uh, nobody knew it'd be like that, uh, except for the salesperson who sold it to us.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna go back for just a moment to the UV.
Right.
I, I see it in munis and I don't see it on my sheet.
I know. But, um, it's, uh.
It's not, it's not gonna be broken out that, on this sheet. Um, you're gonna have to.
It's in the, um, equipment.
Yeah, it's in that 50470, which on the utilities, it's buried in that cash flow as part of the vehicles and equipment. That 1.248, it's in that.
Okay.
But it's, it is detailed, um, in 004020 in munis, under 50470, the account 50470.
Is there any way, looking at the combo truck, that we could get a, kind of a list of, of all the current leases and remaining term, as well as all the proposed leases in this budget, just so we kind of have a picture of what all we're.
Thank you, Bobby.
Is that already in there?
Yeah, probably the current leases. Um, I'll get, I'll get it printed out.
You don't have to do it right now. If you could just email it to me in the next couple of days.
That'd be a good problem. Like, both of the works.
Yeah, for everything.
The 405 price in there is January 1st. If we waited, that's why they said we could get 3 to 5% if we did something now before, their year starts January.
Mine starts in October for this year.
It's calendar year.
Yeah, it's the calendar.
Did you find it? Did you find it yet?
Uh, yeah, I found it.
Okay. Um, and then when I do reprint this, I'll have those actuals on those purchases V and E for y'all. Um, I know you'd asked for them when we were going over gas and electric, but when I reprint, I'm gonna make sure I include those actuals on the purchases, vehicles and equipment.
Well, the UV system, it says it increases our capacity from, on that, from 10 million to, to 12 million. Um, but the, I thought that there was another limiting factor. I didn't think that our plant would, could treat 12,000.
We.
I mean, 12 million gallons a day.
Biologically, it's permitted for four, but we do flow 10 million when.
On a rain event.
Bad rain events.
Which we may be correcting, right?
And we, we are.
Yeah, I think, I think we made, you know, I'm not gonna take offense when people say that we haven't done well. We've done great. Um, you know, and I know that we're getting beat up on it, but we, you, you've spent, uh, this city council and the mayor spent $400,000 every year, um, lining these pipes. Uh, we have a little bit left in this contract. We're gonna get it all earmarked, earmarked. But I can tell you this, uh, you could take our worst offender, which is Valley. And when I first started working here 17 years ago, you could literally rain for 20 minutes and it'd overflow for three days. And that's not exaggeration. I mean, it would just ooze out for three days. It took a rain event of seven inches to get an overflow and it didn't ooze, you know, we had it stopped within hours. Uh, so to say that it's fixed is a mistake, but to say we're not infinitely better is also a mistake.
Well, my, so my question is, do we want to upgrade a system that, you know, that our, our flow might be getting better?
I, I don't think we're upgrading. And, and I think upgrading is just a byproduct. The problem is, and that's what I was trying to point out, is the backup system is 1996 and they're not gonna keep servicing it. And so it's not.
So it just goes to.
It just goes.
How it's made now, like he talked about, if you want to get into that a little bit, it's, it's like cone shaped now.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
So the lamps now basically back the plant up.
Yeah.
The new system, the way they're arranged, straight up and down, are able to flow more water and flow exactly in the same channel. So basically they pull the O1 out, put this one in, do a little cement work to set it in place. So on the construction side is minimal.
But, but I did.
But we do gain, like, we do gain a couple million gallons.
It's just a byproduct though.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not what we're doing it for. We're doing it because we're scared about it. But anybody wants to come there and look at.
In other words, this UV system, the one we're needing to get, you can't get one that's gonna do 8 million gallons. This one does, or does 12.
I mean, you can get one to do 100 million gallons. I mean, because of the way it's laid out. I mean, you can, but this one that we're just getting for us is gonna be built specifically for us.
Well, I think Kevin's saying though, is you're not intentionally buying 12 million. They may not offer a 10 million gallon unit.
No, 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 that's right. That's right. I apologize. Yes, that's, yeah, you're absolutely right. We're just trying to replace the backup and then it'll become the primary. Yeah.
And then in the event you do.
Right.
What we do now, like, like you said, the, the Classic, it, it's basically backup. Any maintenance, we can take the other one down and run it and it'll, it'll run. It's just, um, we fix things as they go out because of the cost.
Yeah.
So the plus is the main one. We get the big rains. If we had a hurricane, we split flow now through both of them. So to kill the back, we really don't kill the bacteria, but.
Sterilize it.
To, to, to get the numbers, the colony counts, you know, that match the permit, um, we run two UVs. So we make sure we meet, you know, our permit.
If anybody wants to see it, I can promise you two things. We'll show you right away. And, and the water that's going through there is, is, um, poo-free.
So we kind of think the same idea of put the new one in, use the old one as backup, minimal maintenance on the old, you know, the old one.
Contrary to popular belief, not pumping raw syringe into the bag?
No, never. That's not even, anyway.
Well, I will, it, it's made it a little bit harder to go between the sheets and the, and the munis that you, we do have to dig. It's in here. It might be on a different page.
I'm gonna fix it.
Keep you on your toes.
It does. You, you do have to look at all that. And, you know, I can think of, especially in the public works, where you have all that equipment that had zeros in there because technically we won't be probably spending any money on it, but we'll be, um, well, dependent upon national conversation today, maybe, maybe not. But if, if we are, there'll definitely be a lot of money that would need to be spent in the 2021 budget, uh, which, which we thought would be wise to start planning for now rather than waiting for the next year because I don't, I don't see it, I don't see things decreasing. I don't think, I don't see expenses decreasing and, and somewhere there's gotta be a placeholder put in there for that. Anyway, counsel, any other questions for wastewater?
Just make sure all the SCADA alerts are working so that.
Buy you some cameras or whatever it takes.
Have any lifts go out that y'all are notified properly?
Well, we have, um, all the major lift stations have been switched over to the Mission that you allowed us to purchase. We talked about that ad nauseam. And the future are all gonna be, uh, as new lift stations come in, that's gonna be what we switch to. Um, it's, it's just made for wastewater where, uh, you know, surveillance is made for electrical. Um, so we're gonna stay with the, with the, what we consider the lower priority will stay with surveillance. It's too expensive, but as it comes, we'll, you know, we'll switch them all over in the next five to 10 years. We'll all, it'll all be Mission. It's the way we probably should have gone in the very beginning. I know it costs a lot of money, but, you know, once we get bad publicity, you can never pay enough to get that back. I think we're all well aware of that.
I do want to go back on the personnel requests. I brought it up for the, for the, um, water, for sewer. And, uh, just some trends. From, uh, 2017 to 2019, there's been a 66% increase in salaries. Uh, from 2017 to 2018, uh, 12%. It was budgeted another 7 and 1/2% increase from 18 to 19, but the actuals was another 13%. So we had a 13 on top of a 12. So I would assume we're catching up.
Well, let me, let me.
Let me get my last statistic out.
All right.
So then this year, over budget, there's an, uh, there is an additional 37.7, almost 38% increase. So you got a 38 on top of a 13 on top of a 12.
All right. So what, so what we did is I listened to what the city council asked us to do. And for the last year, uh, we've worked extremely hard. Uh, there is a range of pay for, uh, sewer plant operators. Starts at like 14 and goes up past 35. So what we did was, is we broke that down into four segments. Um, and the certified operators are gonna be paid, uh, based on, you know, what level of certification they hold. We have to have either a three or four. Most of our guys are fours. Um, I have called around to every municipality in Mobile County that runs a sewer, including Moss, and every municipality, um, to find out what they're paying their certified operators. Uh, keep in mind, when you're looking at a certified operator, um, that person, the biggest, or the, the top certification you have is what I have is a four. And, but I can work any plant, uh, in this state, whether it's at Birmingham or whether it's at Locksley. Uh, and so we're all drawn from the same pool of people. So what we did was, is we went to Aiden, um, when we go to these classes, and I went to the management classes several times this year, and they said, look, you're gonna have to promote within. Um, we have a downward trend. Nobody's trying to do this for a living anymore. Um, the pass rate, the pass rate, um, um, for this, um, sewer and water exam is lower than 20%. Uh, we spent $10,000 of your city's money, uh, to send them to a college class, uh, to prepare them for this test. It takes, uh, three years of training, uh, that we have to sign off on to say they're ready to take the test and to be a certified operator. Um, so, uh, you're aware of this. I think you were at the personnel board when we brought it to it. The personnel board said we do it. I'm not asking for a merit raise at all. I'm asking to pay these guys when they pass a test. Now, if they don't pass a test, they don't get the raise. I won't, um, you know, when I ask for the raise, I'll present you with their certification, their number. So you'll have it hand in hand. Um, also keep in mind that three of our certified operators are now above 60 years old. And if we don't promote within, if we don't build this up from within, um, you know, there's, I don't know which way we're gonna go. But that's what Aiden told us to do. That's what you told us to do. That's what we did.
But now, let me, let me just back up and say that if I'm looking at the increases and the merit raises for them becoming, uh, operator fours, that's not where all the money's coming from. The money's coming from two collection, you have a plant operator trainee, two collection systems operator, and an assistant water slash sewer superintendent. Um, that's where the bulk of the money's, that's 90, that's 170,000. $170,000.
Well. The superintendent's just adding what was defunded in 2017. And, I mean, it takes time to put together a lot of data and statistics, but I did put together full-time, um, employees and the changes in each utility. and the changes in each utility.
And that's what I was talking about for the next year. We had to settle a little bit, see where we're at, see what the workload looks like, see what we're getting accomplished, um, you know, before we go any further. But I think that once we get the cost of service study done, and we know exactly, you know, what we're charging and where we're at, then that's when you can figure out, you know, what your personnel is. If we don't get that, it's going to be very difficult for all of us to come in here and talk about personnel changes. I mean, we had to get that done. And I know that we're working hard on that and stuff. Um, and hopefully it'll get done soon.
Okay. Questions? Wastewater? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other departments right now? Yes, Kim?
I handed out to you, um, I was just trying to be able to help y'all see cash flow for five years on these replacements.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. If y'all want me to, if y'all want to look at it, or, I know that was the question with gas and, um, electric, trying to see if you need to borrow money, can, can you be able to pay for it with your own funds? And the one good thing on, um, I'll tell you, there is an error on the spreadsheet. I just want to put in a new one because, um, on the budget, I didn't pick up the right dollar amount for those capital for equipment. But the one good thing on, um, water and sewer, water and sewers cash, when you look at that, um, the ordinance that was for water, um, required amounts to go into a reserve for, um, repair or capital improvements and replacements. So that does leave out money, um, for these repairs that are meaning to be done in the next five years. Um, so what I did is I went back to 16, and, and, um, this is something that I've done in the past is to be able to look back, to be able to project forward. And, um, you know, I tried doing the best I could on assumptions of looking, you know, for rev, look at revenues, look at expenses, um, and trying to stabilize what re, what is the, um, salaries, you know, putting in 3%, what is considered a normal, not increasing additional staff, but just trying to look at if it's stabilized on your staff to move forward. Um, and then I added, just being, this is an enterprise fund, added back in at the bottom, we have other uses, be able to add what's, they have, um, already have notes, so their, um, debt, so their debt, what's in there is debt, that's their existing debt that's, um, currently on the books, you know, adding back for capital, adding back for these system upgrades. And, um, and also what comes from cash is their half of their, um, connection fee, which are the ordinance. Now it's water and sewer, half their connection fee. So that's the cash that we have to move from operations to put into a reserve. And then you'll see, um, add back for bad debt and depreciation. So you really can see cash-wise what will go down in cash. Um, so I was hoping this would be helpful to be all be able to kind of see can water and sewer pay for, um, these upgrades, looking at water and sewer on its own, you know, um, and they have a hefty cash on their own. It looks good, you know, projecting out five years. Now, if they went maybe faster or slower, you know, will we need a lot of credit? Maybe, you know, just depending on the timing, but the way they talk today, like, you know, part of what we budgeted here, they may not even get to. So just looking at a mo, you know, just looking at water and sewer alone, um, it looks good. I'm not going to exaggerate on that. But I did go in here and add what the capital is for the equipment part. But I did, you know, in the future, years out, not to be spending 1.3 million on, um, capital, but just to be 500,000 per year for equipment. And I've worked on the same spreadsheets, um, for electric and, um, gas. And so the next time we meet, I can have those, we can go over to see cash flow, um, on electric and gas. So, um, if y'all have any questions or anything you want me to do different, but I was just trying to give y'all a tool to be able to make a good decision, you know, on this five-year plan.
I don't suppose, I, I haven't, I don't think I have my sheet. We don't have any URWs that are anticipated to be paid off in the next couple of years. Is that in there?
No, that is, it's not in there, but I'll show you, um, it's going way out there. That is 2011, and it's going out till, um, 2031.
Oh, wow.
Yep, it's just up there. And also, when I went to print that, I printed the lease that out. So, um, I'll see what the lease schedule to you about. And my understanding, those are all, it has been authorized to, um, purchase and that, um, until you approve something in this next budget. I'm not expecting.
Is this the general government utilities vote?
No, the only leases we have out there is just for garbage and streets. So one of those cat equipments is, um, streets, and the rest of that is garbage or sanitation. So the, the last, um, truck that came in, um, this month, this past month, is on here. That's the last one. And that truck was actually ordered in the fall. So that was the very last one that got in.
It says you can't excavate for garbage?
Is that for garbage? I, I, he told me this afternoon.
I have, I have notes. One's, one's for streets, then there's one that's.
Excavators are trackups. I don't know why a trackup would be in the garbage.
Well, one, one is, the top one is for streets.
I think it's just a misprint. I'm quite a dozen.
And then the one that has cat excavator, that's, that's streets and, I wrote it down on my blog.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
The one, where it has. One of the cat equipment belongs to the streets and one belongs to the garbage. There's two different ones.
The one that the cat, I forgot about the cat excavator.
Uh-huh.
That one, is it that one that it has two departments in it?
Richard, Richard told me that one of the pieces of equipment belonged to streets and one to garbage, and I didn't.
I think the top one's to streets. This is a cat 420F. Where's that? Where's the cat 420F? Is that it?
So that was.
That or the budget?
Yes. These are already purchased.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is already purchased.
Well, that, what is this? This is the 50,000 of the end of lease purchase.
That is a piece of equipment that was a true rent to, it wasn't rent to own, it was a street.
That's a cat excavator. That's a big trackup. I'm just saying, if they were asking what it was, I'm just trying to understand if the difference between excavator, goat or wheel loader. And I don't see where that would be.
These leases can be a nightmare.
Yeah. So, so there's, there's some leases that were done previous years that was from Caterpillar that you would return it back at market value. And that's the one he wants to purchase it at the end of the lease for market value.
Yep. Mine too, Jimmy. So, um, we're going to go ahead and, uh, we're going to go ahead and get into some budget discussions among the council. Uh, yeah, we can take a break. Let's take a, uh, what do you have, any five minutes? Uh, let's take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
Last, almost a month, last several weeks for sure, we've been listening to the budget presentations. And I, I like to say, because I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, budget proposals. And, uh, so, you know, our, our options, council, I've said this from the start, and I say it every year, is, you know, we can adopt a budget as presented. We can, uh, modify it in, in any which way we desire. Or we can start all over, which I don't recommend this, start all over and come up with our own budget. Uh, so anyway, I, I think every year that I've been on the council that we've gone with an option number two, which was to amend the budget to various degrees from one year to another. So, you know, turn it over to y'all for discussions. Was there anything in particular that you had, uh, heartache with, or anything in particular that, um, you want to see added or, or, uh, taken away? I, I, I want to say, one thing I want to say is that I, uh, I did not, uh, haven't seen how the wrecked land is going to be paid for. And I've got a, I got a plan for that. And it's pretty simple. And I'll even run that, through that for you. The 2.65 million dollars. Uh, we have 695,000 dollars in a prepaid debt, sales tax reserve that can be used for that. Uh, and these are just things that we can use. We have 1.065 million in, in an investment CD. And it may be that we can't take it out without penalty right now, but we could take it out at some time during the year. So to make that up, we could, uh, take it from the rainy day fund. And then when we can cash that in without penalty, we could pay back the rainy day fund. And we have another 600 and almost 40,000 in another reserve fund that, that we could use. Uh, so all of that, uh, just those things totaled to about 2.4 million. So for the other point two, five million to, to point three, we could use the impact fees if we so wanted. Uh, the other option would be to borrow it from the rainy day fund if we wanted to. And then we would have to add a expense in the budget to have sales tax revenue go back to paying back the rainy day fund. So that you would have an additional expense in the, in the general fund, uh, account. So I believe that's the, probably the easiest way that can be changed slightly if somebody wanted to. But I would think we would have to take it from our rainy day fund. And then as we go throughout the year, uh, pay that back. But that would have to be an expense added, added to the budget. The other comment I wanted to make is that, you know, we, we don't have any debt prepayment this year. So I, I believe that all of the money that was used for debt prepayment has been gobbled up into the general fund. And I do have some concerns over that. Uh, I, I'm not saying that it's not necessary, but it was additional monies that we've had. And, and, uh, I think mostly because of that, uh, being used in the general fund is, is, is at least one reason why we don't need to transfer money from utilities to, um, to the general fund. And I also believe that by reclassifying expenses and, and not saying, and rightly so, under utilities, the money can stay in utilities and doesn't have to come and pay money that's in the, pay for expenses that is in the, the general fund. So, uh, I have actually, I'm going to wait for you guys to make some comments, but I actually have some, some things that, that may be needed to add, be added to the budget or taken away from the budget. And I'll give you a couple of quick examples. And, and I, and you may have captured these, Jill, already. Okay. So, you know, a lot of these probably were captured. We, we had talked about, you know, if the fire department comes back and is to match us a certain amount, that we wanted to add 331,000 dollars. Um. Oh, you have all that? Okay. I'm sorry. You're, I didn't know that. You're, you're ahead of me. And then I know the library was, I think, about 41,000 dollars. Those are some notes that I had. Uh, it looks like you do have this.
Some of these you might have already, Jill might have already added.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did add the 331. I actually had 331, 610, but I can go back down to 331. Um, yeah. And then I, I think I did for sure capture the library.
Right. And then I think, um, let's see, you have the library. Uh, you do in Parks and Rec. I know Robert and I talked about, um, rather than taking some money from maybe one of those. um, rather than taking some money from maybe one of those funds, we could take five hundred ninety thousand from the rainy day fund. But then you have to add it as an expense to be reimbursed every.
Which means you'd have to cut because you can't just take the sales tax.
You absolutely would have to cut, yes.
If you take the sales tax, why do you need it for the rainy day?
Yeah, you, you, you have to, you, it has to be the sales tax to go back to repay the rainy day fund. That's what it was.
All I'm saying is, is we would have to cut the budget that much. And also the funds that you're talking about, that's discounting everything that I handed out as far as the critical needs we need right now and all of those.
It's, uh, it is, Mayor, and I, I respect your opinion, but we've, we've listened to every presentation. Now, this is a council discussion. Council is responsible for passing the budget and these are just things that I wanted to talk about.
Jack, I'll go ahead and.
And I, I think that Robert wants to talk about some things as well. Uh, I, I, yeah, okay, go ahead. You take over.
I did a.
You have some things on there that I.
I did a spreadsheet a couple of weeks ago that showed the trend that I was concerned about with, uh, revenue increase versus expenditure increase. And I kind of manipulated that number trying to remove capital expenditures to where it was more apples to apples. But instead I went back in this little handout I have that has the orange highlighted areas or, you know, straight numbers from, uh, twenty seventeen, seventeen actuals and twenty nineteen actuals given this year and the difference in those three years. And it shows that same trend of revenue, uh, five and a half percent increase over three years with a fifteen percent increase in expenditures. And the second sheet shows the twenty nineteen actual in that first column versus the twenty twenty budget and what the difference in, uh, revenue versus expenses are. So we're showing a seven point two seven increase in revenues in one year when expenses of seventeen point eight one.
It's just an increase with what you just said. So just so you know, um, but, but also I sent you an email about all this. I'm not sure if you read it, but the reason the city's expenses have gone up is not because we added expenses. It's because we expensed the proper departments where they needed to be expensed. That's where most of the expenses were coming from.
Okay.
As far as increases.
I, I want to start with, I want to start with just revenue that last year, if you look, if you look at this year's budget that we have, we've been working on, we were seven hundred and, I don't have the exact number, it's close to seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars short of what we projected last year.
I emailed. I don't think you read the email. But I did explain to you that a million dollars was transferred out of fund balance. That immediately takes it from the bottom line. We actually exceeded our budget goals by three hundred thousand dollars. I, I explained all of this in an email.
You sent the email to me?
Yes, I did. Before you sent it.
Is that this year's?
Yeah, this year's.
That's two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
That, that, that deficit was all. By the funds transfer to pay off debt. And the fund, I, I said it detailed. I'll just send it all to you all.
Well, let's say we, let's say we, we did exceed revenue last year disregard the seven eighty. We're still showing a seven point two seven increase, right, from last year's actual?
The real conversation is look at how much we've accomplished without borrowing money. This does not include all of the things that we have been paying for investing in and we're still balancing the budget without utility profits. It's, it's amazing. I've been showing you what the financials would really look like if we never made any changes. We would be in a surplus of four million plus dollars. So if you really want to look at where we were before and where we are now, then I'll show you where we were with, if we made no changes and how we would be millions and billions of dollars in the surplus. But guess what? It would be wrong.
I, I'm, I'm still not understanding if the actuals are shown on here, revenue of twenty-eight, six fifty-one and the budget was twenty-nine, four thirty-four. And you said it was caused of a, a one million dollar transfer out? Is that right?
I agree.
Well, wouldn't that be under expenses and not revenues?
It's a fund balance. So it's not, when you take something out of a fund balance, that revenue has already been darkened pre-issue. So when you take it out, just like if you take out money from the, the rainy day fund or any fund that you're talking about right now, it'll immediately come off as a debt, added to the deficit for twenty twenty budget. Over a million dollars was transferred out of fund balance to pay off debt. There's still seven hundred thousand dollars of it roughly in that fund balance. You transfer that out, it's going to be an automatic seven hundred thousand dollars taken off our, and I, I think Kim can explain this even better than this, but this is, I'm sending it to, to all of you. I sent it to you on Robert, uh, Robert on the twenty-four.
Well, would that not count as a, a, a count, would that not have counted as a revenue for a previous year then?
It did count as a revenue for a previous year.
So if it was a revenue for a previous year, then the twenty nineteen actual numbers are?
It, it would be expensed. If you take it out of the fund balance, it's expensed in the two thousand nineteen because it's already earned revenue. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I get that.
Government accounting, I don't get it.
I get that.
That's exactly what happens.
But I'm, but I'm just still looking at, at, at straight revenues, not talking about any fund balances.
But that's why that shows a seven, a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit when it's actually a three hundred thousand dollar surplus.
Because you put that fund balance in the budget number.
Right. And it only, it only created, we transferred over a million dollars, which is taken off the bottom line. That million dollars, instead of being a deficit of a million dollars, we exceeded our goal by around three hundred. So that's why it was only a seven hundred dollar deficit. It's not a real deficit. And our cash fund balances have increased too, both utility and city. That's not reflected in any of those figures either that you're talking about. I mean, you're, you're taking stats and really taking it out of context.
Mayor, I'm just going by the budget that we've been given.
I know that. And that.
That's taking it out of context?
Does not include, it doesn't, it, it doesn't explain how these things are, it's government accounting, it is different than regular accounting. And that's why I emailed you on the twenty-four. Never heard from you. I just forwarded to you again and all of you. So you can understand at least that part of it.
If I may just jump in, what, what you're talking about, you're not really looking at bottom line right now. You're talking about the changes in.
Talking about revenue.
Revenue and the changes in expenses as percentages?
Correct.
Okay.
But we've taken over all of our, the city's taken over all of its own expenses. I mean, it's like, what have we been talking about the last three years? Y'all don't understand that of course those expenses are, if you take on expenses that were yours the whole time, but you just started recording it in two thousand seventeen.
And my, my question based on some of this that we're looking at that you prepared. I think I asked Kenny about this before from a revenue perspective. Some of these numbers like on property tax and, and, uh, some of the local tax, some of these numbers are coming directly from.
It's just the property tax.
Just property taxes. And he's saying, here's the number. And you, you kind of went with the lower, more conservative range of that.
So.
But you gotta use the numbers they give you, correct?
Yes, the number he gave us, that's the number he's going to collect. And we just took that number and recorded ninety-seven percent of, and that's for error, you know? They may not reflect that or property comes in and they want to, um, appeal it. You know, you've got to have that, you know, there's going to be times where some of the properties are appealed based on his culinary numbers.
But you couldn't just discount that number more than that, really?
You could, you could, but historically.
That's a good number.
Historically at the county, that's what we did.
And it was what the amount was short last year.
And we, exactly. We looked at the number that was budgeted last year and what it came in at, and it was ninety-seven percent. So, um, we tested it back on the county's numbers.
Got it.
You want to continue, Robert?
Go ahead.
You know, I, you, you know, e- even if the government accounting is hard to understand and there's a fund balance, when I, when I see, you know, a revenue projection and I see, uh, you know, a budget in other words, and I see an actual and I see a difference there, it implies to me that we, still implies to me that we missed it because I don't see, in, in that revenue column, I don't see anything in there that says anything about, uh, a fund balance being transferred in.
The fund balance isn't going to be shown there.
Exactly. So if that fund balance is, is a separate item, um, and it was, and it was earned in a prior year, then I'm still looking.
It was money that was put away.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's been recorded in all of those.
Right. But if I'm just looking at these categories at their budget versus actual, the, these categories, not, not count fund balance, it's still missed by
Do you know what?
Almost, almost eight hundred thousand dollars.
Previous budget's thus way further than this. And you know why you didn't know it? It's because you didn't have actual figures to look at in previous budgets before this term. The, the difference in the actuals for the, from, I'm talking about before this term, were way off compared to what it is now.
Well, I'm only looking at what I have that since, since, from twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. That, that's all I'm focused on right now.
But if you knew that the other numbers were off and you were able to pass those budgets in two weeks, what's the difference?
We, we, we spent, Mayor, I mean, you know, come on.
It is, but that's, that's the reality.
Mayor, this is what's going to happen right now. We, we're trying to have this discussion and you're, you know, you're going back to the past and you're, and you're making these accusations. And I was part of that.
It's not accusations. These are, these are the.
And, and you know, and, listen, I'm trying to make this easy for all of us. If you will let us have our discussions, we have listened patiently for weeks and weeks. And I don't want to go back into the past. I'm trying to focus on these numbers as, as the rest of the council is. So I, I, I still am looking at an actual number that did not hit target. And it doesn't talk anything about, uh, monies from a prior year that would carry over or, you know, any kind of accruals. It's, it's straight.
Actual budget.
Apples to apples, it looks like to me. I, I don't see anywhere that I'm not comparing apples to apples. And seeing that for these revenues right here, that they were missed by about eight hundred thousand dollars.
And that's on us. I mean, we're the one that passed the budget.
Yep.
I mean, you're always going to be off. It's just a tool.
Yeah, understand.
We still balanced the budget.
We balanced the budget mostly, I think, because of so many, you know, because salaries are not paid at a hundred percent of budget. They are, you know, we lag behind because we have to pay. And because of that, we probably fell ten to fifteen percent below budget on, on salaries. And then on expenses, we didn't get something in time. So we didn't have to pay for, or something else in time. And I think that's how, I think that's why. But it eventually catches up to you. But go ahead, Robert. I know you were, you were trying to make a point.
Well, I, I just wanted to start with the revenue and I was going to recommend making a cut to it. But I'm just one council member, so, um, see what y'all's thoughts are.
That, that's not going to make the future a reality. Only cutting expenses can make the future a reality.
That's right. But you gotta, you gotta get to what your revenue is before you start cutting expenses.
Well, I think that's what he's, exactly what he's proposing.
I know. There's other revenue that we are, we totally, we're conservative and we, we know it's going to be higher.
Such as what?
It's just a tool.
I know it's just a tool, but we.
It's, it's crazy. You can't, if you're going to lower the estimates on revenue and you're going to add expenses, I, I'm just starting to see where, where we're going to go with this budget, honestly. We're going to have to completely redo it. We will. Because the proposed park, however scenario that you pay for this, are all the cuts that we have to make.
The park's not entered into that at all.
No, the parks, if you do that, will absolutely have to cut.
Park, you said. I said park.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it.
So you're going to lower, lower revenue, add two point six five million dollars of the payment for that?
No, it's not added there at all. Not at all.
You have to pay reserve?
It's not added in there. I, my plan didn't include adding two hundred.
All the scenarios you said, would, would require money to be paid back that would need to be put in.
I, I had repaying back, uh, well, I, I said three hundred thousand. Uh, I borrowed three hundred thousand from impact fees, which doesn't have to be paid back. Robert's suggestion was five hundred ninety thousand. It would have to be made, repaid back. There's no mention of two point six five million.
You mentioned the rainy day sales tax.
Yeah.
And the fund balance transfers. Fund balance transfers are going to negatively impact the bottom line too.
The, um, so Ms. Creach, the, um, prepaid debt sales tax reserve is six hundred ninety-six thousand. We, we spend that, that doesn't have to be paid back to, to anything.
You just have to follow what your ordinance states.
We can edit our ordinance and say we can divert it to that. We can also edit, we can also authorize the reserve and A G earnings to be spent towards that. I believe that's unrestricted.
That's, that's what I, I checked.
I also believe that we have an investment CD savings. And I'm not saying you do it right away. There may be an early withdrawal penalty. But whenever it matures and can be withdrawn, we can use that. In the meantime, we could take, if it's one point zero six five out of the rainy day fund, as soon as that CD was mature enough to be cashed in, we could repay the, uh, rainy day fund. I, I came up with two point three nine nine million and we could take point two five out of impact fees and pay for it. There's nothing that has to be repaid. In fact, that's exactly what we're going to have to do. And we're going to have to just take this on council because we're going to be fighting this battle every single time we have a meeting until we do it. And, uh, the other, the other portions, uh, you, you can't change the expenditures in the general government that, that Councilman Brown has put in here. He said add the three thirty-one. You can't change that. I think it's a good idea to add the three fifty for the purchases of, of equipment.
Now, let's talk about that. The three fifty, is that those lease payments?
Yeah, all those vehicles that had zeros in there.
Right. So I did add.
Next year will be a fund balance.
Right. I did add, um, if you can see that, see down there at the bottom, it's a transfer out. And I can show it, however, I mean, if you would prefer me put it up there as a placeholder, um, I can do that. Um, but I have noted it on the bottom of streets and the bottom of sanitation. These two yellow amounts.
I just don't recall them being, when we went through it, I do not think that they were.
They weren't on there. I added them today.
And it really, if we're smart and we're planning for the future, we should at least put three hundred and fifty thousand towards, towards that.
Okay.
And, and I, I think, yes, Mayor, these would require cutting the budget. And I think we ought to just put it on you to come back and decide how you want to do that. And if you don't want to come back and decide how to do it, we can do it. But I think that staff would be best equipped to do that. I mean, I've said all.
Counsel, let me, Jack, let me, while I'm thinking about this, if you don't mind, on that second page, I'm also showing in that big highlighted block the transfers of debt servicing capital projects. Last year we had about five point seven million. This year it's down to one point nine because all the debts paid off. And I don't know why nothing's going into capital projects. But if we continue, if you look at twenty nineteen actual to the twenty twenty budget expenditures, we're up four point five million dollars. If we increase four point five million dollars at the same rate that expense, revenues are going up, we're going to have to, uh, increase sales tax or something in order to balance a budget or back to transferring utilities next year. If you increase expenditures at that same rate next year.
What is in the proposed budget, we're not going to increase it so we can't balance it. I mean, my intention is never to use utility profits for anything except community development.
Okay. I don't, I don't care how you relabel it, but if you follow on that government expenses, it's four. expenses, it's four point five increase from 2019 to the 2020 budget. That's the simple, I mean, simple math, subtract A from B, four point five million.
We're still showing a balanced budget, it's not like I'm proposing these expenses and there's not a way-
But eventually it's going to evaporate.
What's going to happen?
The gap is going to get so wide that you cannot, you cannot balance the budget and you have one hiccup in revenue and it won't balance.
Well, I've already showed where the, close to four million dollars in the debt service and capital projects from last year to this year, we don't have it and you're not going to have it next year and you're going to have a four point five million increase in expenses.
We, we had a, we had a, a two-year revenue increase of five point five percent over two years and then this year we're predicting a seven point two seven percent.
That's not true, are you talking about sales tax?
Nope, all, all, total, general government.
No, I'm just wondering, I thought you meant sales tax.
No, total, total general government was, where's that sheet you gave out, Robert? Some, you gave it out, maybe the last meeting or the one before that?
I don't know.
Isn't it amazing that you are saying this, but yet you have no problem spending two point six five million dollars on Parkland, but employees, investing in employees for citizen services that has been neglected since 2012, completely neglected, is totally different than spending all at once money for anonymous-
He's not, he's not saying anything to be cut, we're, we're talking about the rate of increase being reduced and, and getting to something more, more reasonable. If your, your government actual revenues increased from, from 2017 to 2019 by five and a half percent or a two point seven five percent average over two years, yet from last year to this year, or from this year to next year, we're predicting seven point two seven percent. And so I think Councilman Brown's, you know, reducing revenues to indicate that and to indicate the shortfall, which you say doesn't exist, but, but I still say does exist because I'm comparing apples to apples and I'm seeing an eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall. And I don't know how that's being irresponsible, we, we know that we need these things and-
I mean, it just, it makes me laugh when you say irresponsible after everything that we've corrected in the last three years.
You know, Mayor-
I mean, it's just, I mean, the, the last thing you can say is that this term, we've been irresponsible with financials, that is absolutely the last thing.
Nobody said we've been irresponsible, but I, but I tell you, I'm really trying to talk to counsel right now and I'm going to ask you not to interrupt again, please.
You were referring that question to me, or that comment to me.
So, so counsel, we can take these, we can tell them to go back and make the adjustments and find out the best way to do it, we can do it ourselves, or you can make another suggestion, but I think these, I don't know how you can't make these suggestions, it's everything, every one of these has been talked about, except for the revenue, and the revenue is not a, not a unreasonable request to just try to make revenue projections more reasonable than they are. And here's the other thing, you know, if you, if you had to cut something and, and revenue projections come out to, they start trending towards seven percent, we can always put it back in the budget, but I, I think things need to come out. I'll say it. I mean, we could pro, we could use proration, we could sit there and say, everybody cut their budget by whatever, but I don't think that's necessarily a wise thing because some departments probably don't need to cut theirs any. So, what do y'all, Kevin, Jimmy, Robert?
I don't see what needs to be cut because, you know, I understand what you, what Mayor is saying, it's not, doesn't Z Hall it is, and if you keep it this rate, you're going to have a real problem.
I mean, and also, like, certainly everybody understands, reducing that revenue projection is still predicting a revenue increase and reducing the spending to offset these things is still predicting an expense increase by quite a bit.
Right.
We're, we're not, we're not cutting expense, expenses to less than 2019 levels, not even 2019 budget levels, which were above actuals, and we're not cutting revenues below 2019 levels.
It was not above actuals, I explained that.
Well, our-
I mean, it's, the wash at the end is the bottom line and we exceeded goals.
We've, we can't, we can't do some of the things that we want to do because we're growing our government at an unsustainable rate, bottom line, my point of view. It's unsustainable, but we got to get it under control.
Full free, well, family insurance is a start.
You are welcome to not participate at any time you would like, would you like to, we'd ask the treasurer if you want to refuse it or we want to write a check back to the city for the past three years that you've taken it?
I refuse the, the superintendent of utilities, I'm the cheapest mayor, full-time mayor in Fero and probably the easiest-
We're talking medical, we're talking medical benefits, area insurance benefits, you are free-
Let's stay current, let's stay, let's stay current, I don't care about previous-
And I'm going to ask the chief to escort you out of there.
Let's do it!
We're not, we're not at that point.
I just said another word.
Why don't we just leave? We're not at that point.
We've been past that point for three years.
No, we're not at that point, if you're going to, if you're going to target me like that, that is ridiculous.
I have asked you to let the council speak now for the last thirty minutes.
I'm letting the council speak.
Counsel?
All right, so I just wrote down some things, just, I guess bigger picture things that I'm, that concern me now moving forward. Sales tax, I know we've, we've, we're moving that into the general fund for this, this proposed budget.
Are you saying that, because we can't cover budget otherwise?
Well, I'm saying because we don't have any debt to prepay, so whether, you know, I'm concerned, what are we going to do with the sales tax, should it be diverted to capital projects, should we do something else with it? The leases, I, I see that we've got, if we add back the three fifty for payments and just put that in as a placeholder, plus I think the list that Kim just gave us, that added up to about four hundred fifty ballpark in annual payments and leases for these other pieces of equipment we bought. The Parkland, I mean, that's two point six five million, I know y'all just mentioned how you plan to pay for that, but still, that's, that's two point six five million that we've got a, we, we got a million things on our wish list and I just don't see how we're paying for everything. K one center, you know, we bought it, we need to start working on a plan for upgrading that and then the utilities and infrastructure upgrades, so I'm just, I'm just looking at the big picture thinking massive expenditures on, on each of these things that are, that are adding up, so, you know, we're definitely going to have to cut some of the existing expenses, but we're also going to have to go through some of these items and figure out what's priority and, and cut, cut some of these or get, or we're going to have to borrow money to fund some of this. I, I just don't see how we can do everything that we want to do and I think all of these are, are valuable, beneficial things for the, for the citizens and the community, but-
If you'll look at the screen, I've added everything except the five hundred ninety thousand from the sales tax and we've got, already got a deficit of four hundred eighty three thousand one seventeen.
You've added anything, everything but what?
Except the five ninety.
Right.
For the parking rec-
And that may not, sure, a million something if you were to add the five ninety.
Yeah, and that's before you reduce revenue.
That's leaving revenue as is.
Right, yeah, that's about what I figured. What exactly is the pilot fee of eight percent that's being, that's coming from utilities?
Explain that in my presentation, but the pilot fee is what?
I can't remember.
Utilities, I mean, cities who own their utilities, private utilities, most of them have a pilot fee, a pilot fee is usually taken off of the gross profits and it's around eight to ten percent of the gross profits. Right now, we can't afford to do that. If we were to consider anything for community development right now, I proposed eight percent off of net profits, which is where that figure came in.
How is that different than a utility transfer, what's the difference between that?
Because that's paying for community development instead of government operating expense. I mean, there, if y'all don't understand the difference between that, I just think that's scary.
I've seen it, I've seen utility transfers go to community development over the last several years, I mean-
Six million dollars, I think? No, six million dollars wasn't for community development, it was to subsidize a city, so it wouldn't, so thankfully.
Community development actually, prior to this administration, was paid out of the utilities, so there wa, there wouldn't really have been a need.
It was a community transfer.
Jimmy, what's your thoughts on that sales tax, I mean?
I mean, I mean, my, my first thought would be to apply that to-
To something.
Purchases or capital, you know, capital projects, capital purchases or, or lease payments, I don't suppose you can prepay any of those, but I think if you, if you just automatically shift it into the general fund and then you're, you're not going to have it if you, if you need it down the road for, for debt payment, but I, I'm still trying to wrangle with how we, how we buy all, how we buy the land, how we, how we work on the K one center, how we do all the utility infrastructure, I mean, this is-
I'm with you, Jimmy, I'm with you.
It's a lot of stuff to-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot. Well, I, I threw, I wrote a few things down, Jimmy, like the welcome center, I think it was maybe cut to a bare minimum.
One fifty to a million, I think.
At one time it was five hundred and I, I just say, it's got to wait, I mean, something like that, it just has to wait.
Well, I put in three hundred and then, uh, over here, I want to say it was put at like a hundred and fifty, which was the bottom of that, so I mean, get back that down by half.
Might as well take the one fifty out because it's not, one fifty's not going to do any good, if you get into it, it's going to be windows and-
Did you adjust that Marina expense down by two hundred and thirty eight thousand?
Yes, that is in there, was that in there operating? Let's see here.
That was in there, it was-
It taken that, the two hundred thousand out for general maintenance.
Yeah, it was for the dredging that we would do with our own dredger.
Right, we left the dredge in there, but then took the maintenance out of two hundred thousand, so yes.
Took, took two hundred and thirty eight out though.
Yeah, it was a even two hundred that we took.
There was a, I have a note on the Civic Center of a hundred and eighty thousand for some improvements and that wasn't roof or anything, but just, I mean, you, you got to cut somewhere. I just threw some things out there, Jimmy.
Now, most of these items the mayor has on the bottom here of current city capital needs, I mean, most of those are not in there, it's just twenty five behaving and a three hundred.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're thinking about capital reserve funding that is now being, trying to figure out buying Parkland, those are the things that still haven't been talked about or planned.
Well, and that's, I think what I'm sort of getting at is that, you know, everything we're discussing, all these ideas, that they're all things that either need to be done or, or would be nice to be done, but I think we're going to have to-
That's right.
And I know that's what we're doing right now, getting, getting the red pen out and start getting real, you know, real serious with, with what are we going to cut, what are we not going to, what are we going to put on the back burner or what are we putting on the front burner? I mean, you can't do it all, so what are the priorities to everybody? I mean, I personally, like I said, there's something with the K one center, but that might not be a priority over upgrading the infrastructure.
Well, first of all, you're going to be a good ways down the road for that because you're going to have to have some design, it's got to be design costs as well, that would be-
You've got to get the study back, as far as structure, what kind of shape and structure is that, that's a long one.
That's it, next week.
Right, and, but then we, I mean, still, yeah, I mean, that's, that's not going to happen, that's not happening overnight, we don't have to spend a million dollars this year on that, but, but these are all things that we need to, we need to be thinking, you know, twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and, and that's where I started thinking about, okay, well, what about the, the leases, you know, as, as you continue to add leases, then that increases-
I agree.
That, that obligation to what you're having to pay and then that money's not there when you want to spend it on something, the K one center, if you deplete all these different funds to, I don't know, I mean, it's just a lot, I know we're having this conversation, that's why we're having this.
Well, that's why I think, you know, if you, if you are at that high end of your revenue and you expand your expenses to cover that-
Doesn't leave much, would it?
Doesn't leave anything and, and then if you miss it, truly miss it, which we have, then, then you're really in a world of hurt because you voted to fund certain capital projects and I, I think that, you know, going all the way back to, to Robert's recommendation is that I just don't think it's unreasonable to lower your revenue expectations. And I've said this for the last couple of years, we're not looking enough at revenues, we keep looking at expenses, we need to look at revenues too.
We're not looking at enough revenue opportunities either, the ones that I've been proposing are not, are either not approving the full amount or not considering it.
I'll go there, what, give me one.
Lodging tax, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars lost and gone for 2019. Lodging tax, nobody cared, no taxpayer locally cares about whether or not the lodging tax was six.
And that was, when was that proposed, again, I've seen it-
That was in 2018, that's proposed seven percent and you lowered it to six. Um, there's-
But it was, what was it, I mean, we actually raised it, we just-
But that was, the seven percent was the, the, the average and I could think Fero would call for a premium because we're a tourist town and we don't have that many, we don't have accommodations, not, most people stay, that are visiting Fero, stay elsewhere.
So, on, going back on, on revenues, on the property tax, you feel pretty confident that number's ninety seven percent of what Ted said last year, do we use a hundred percent of what he said as well?
We use ninety seven percent of what he said.
Last year as well?
No, I think a hundred percent, yes.
This year we're doing ninety seven.
Before we got the county expert in the house.
Got it.
Yeah.
Um, so.
And there's, I recommended the-
If you just put the percentage on there.
Gas tax, because we don't have a city gas tax, we're the Oakley City in the county that doesn't have a gas tax. And explained too that this is not an increase that's, that citizens are going to see it to pump because we're basically giving that profit to people who pay, who sell gas because the, the amount improves the tax and they have to be competitive with the area. Spanish for, and Dapne, I think one percent, we don't know exactly how much it's going to be, but it is income that will help with police and the police jurisdiction and it will help with streets and public works.
About charges for service, what all does that capture, is that like us?
Charges for services.
Yeah, five million it was.
That includes those, um-
Pilot fees.
No, the utility collection fee and the admin, all the salaries for the revenue department and everybody and administrative, that's those, that's the transfer almost.
So it looks like it's in, is that a number that you just pick and assign and it is what you say it is?
It's based on a formula, I mean, we-
It's based on just administrative, that the utilities use and it's the amount that's been used.
I was looking, it was five point seven in seventeen, it dropped down to about four point six in nineteen, so it was decreasing.
Well, we, as we found out more, like revenue, not revenue, but meter and-
Well, I think because of the shift in where everybody, yeah, the meter department, we started paying them out of the utilities, so they were no longer factored in to that formula.
But it was not done the first year because it was just every year you find more-
Right.
Ways to be more accurate.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, so there's ten percent drop, ten percent drop, then a ten percent increase is what's kind of targeted this year, so is that a, is that a number that, you know-
Well, it's going to go down because we really need to do an updated budget based on these edits.
An updated budget? An updated budget?
I mean, well, you have it there, or you could give it.
Yeah, I.
That, that includes the general government.
Yeah, I'm sitting here looking at this, it might be, may have already done something different.
Yeah, I have.
And that would also, and then, uh, utilities would pay a percentage of that, general government admin, so.
So if you, if you drop. If you make cuts, then that's gonna also decrease that line item, because it's a percentage of your.
Of personnel, yes.
Got it. And the other revenue, I don't know what all that entails, but it, it's going from one sixty-six to six sixteen, that's a big jump, so I'm just trying to capture some of these.
Yeah, and Jimmy, I looked at a lot of these, and, and you know, and it's, it is kinda splitting hairs, but then again, you know, if, if you were cutting revenues by eight hundred thousand, you gotta start somewhere, and, you know, I had the property taxes, if I followed just a, a two-year trend, instead of it being six point three five five, was six point two. So that was a reduction of a hundred and fifty-five thousand. On the total local taxes, if I was following the trends, instead of eleven point oh one six, I had ten point nine, that was a hundred and sixteen thousand, so, you know, out of that, I got two hundred and, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, uh, which is, you know, twenty-five percent of that, just right there.
You have the spreadsheet, which shows each year, and now we got to the trend amount that was used.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if that was part of the.
I don't know that it was, like, I did it in the early beginning stages of revenue, I don't think I ever went back and, like, updated it.
Okay, I mean, 'cause you went as far back as how many years?
I think it was sixteen, sixteen or seventeen, I can't remember.
It went back pretty far.
Oh, Jimmy, if you look at that first page again, on those total government expenditures, the twenty-nine point nine eight million, um, on the middle of the page, on page one.
The overall budget.
And these numbers are kinda gonna be, they may have changed some, okay, but when you see the difference, you, you could absorb all the changes, and it wouldn't matter a whole lot. You see it yet?
Twenty-nine point nine three eight.
Yes, and then you look at the actual, and that's a four and a half million dollar increase, which is seventeen point eight percent. And to think that we can't actually get our expenses down to something that's just, you know, of, you know, four or five hundred thousand dollars, when we were, when, when it's, when it's budgeted to go up by four and a half million. I just, I, I, I can't fathom that. I mean, even if you knock that down to twenty-nine million, you're up.
It's a million bucks off, not down, but yeah, you're still up.
Yeah, you're still up.
Two and a half. No, three and a half.
Three and a half million dollars. I mean, we, we paid off, um, were we paying off, Kim, was that triangle debt, that one point one five million, was that coming out of the general fund?
That was off the general fund.
Huh? So that, that was freed up, that got paid off in, last December, so we freed that up, we freed up all the, the, the sales tax that was used for debt prepayment. We paid up, we paid, we, we freed up probably three and a half million dollars, which, which I had envisioned, ultimately, all things being equal, could be used for a lot of these other projects. You know, divert part of it for whatever else you need.
But the way that was budgeted, that's the reason there's such a hit this year, instead of having that money every year moved from general fund to go over to that debt, debt payment or that debt fund, it all sat there in general fund, so that's in the fund balance, and so all that cash, and then that's what's hitting, will hit this year as an expense, 'cause you, you move that cash out. Um, if y'all ever do it again, I'm gonna recommend, on a year basis, you just go ahead and move that out, so that you'll do it every year.
Rather than one, you got like five years worth stored up.
Yes, and one big hit, and so.
But we don't have that much stored up in there.
But what we just paid off did, and that's the reason you're gonna have in this year's financials, is that, that transfer out to debt service, to pay all that debt, was hit in one year.
And then the seven hundred thousand roughly that's in there is also more hit, like that, right?
Yes, because just the way that the budget was, it was stated, that the resolution stated that's how you're supposed to do the money, so all the money, the cash was, it just moved out.
But that's impacting the bottom line through appropriations and transfers, it's not actually impacting the expenditures?
Right.
It's the transfers of expenditure.
Yeah, but he's talking about this section right here.
It's not in this section.
It's not, it's, it doesn't factor into that seventeen percent.
Right.
Yep.
But I think you, you had recommended, and I, I like that, that, you know, transferring or doing a one-time, uh, because it was, leaving that fund to pay off debt. And that continuing to be funded was an accident. It's not like that was a planned thing, so correcting it, what did you recommend?
Well, you could move that money over to capital improvement, it's just what the council wants to do with that, that money to go over to, since it was collected for debt, um, you could move it over to increase it into the capital, um, improvements. And then another fund y'all have, um, so you get, like, it's in this budget, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that comes from the state, which is part of some, um, actually interest of the oil and gas trust from the state. Um, it's in a bank account in general fund, but it really should be in its own fund, but it's the municipal capital improvements. And in the law, it states that, you know, the, the body makes a decision how that money's been spent, but it's been, it's been put aside for several years, and now it's seven hundred thousand. There's a lot of these improvements that you're willing to make, that, that money could be used for, you know.
Was that in that spreadsheet that I did? It was not?
Um, I think it's, it's restricted so much, I didn't get your.
Seven hundred and sixty-nine, I have it listed as restricted only used for capital improvements of building projects.
That's correct, so, so that money, um, is, is sitting in fund balance, you know, 'cause over the years, but, you know, my recommendation would be to move that out to a separate fund account for separately.
I used to have that debt.
Um, but any of these capital projects that's in this budget, if you wanna use that money, that's earmarked, that's, that money can only be used for those capital projects.
How you balance it?
Can't be, it says improvements, can it only be used for improvements, or can it be used for new construction?
It could be new construction.
Or you start taking.
The definition of capital improvements.
Utility transfer, or you ask another sales type to pay for your stuff you're trying to do.
No, no, sir, no, I just make.
That's what you're saying, is, can we build to build something new?
Yeah, it could be.
And we're pilfering the reserve.
With it, and you could, um, build, um, the A G opinion I found was, if you had a, um, baseball field, and you wanna do improvements to the baseball field, that money could be used for that, so I found the A G opinion specifically that answers that question.
Valanta? Get the study done, we're gonna have to with that. Where are we at, guys? Eight thirty, I mean, uh, I'm about, thought as much as I can think today. Do y'all wanna come back with a, some, some dates to reconvene, and then come back with specific cuts and, and changes, or do you wanna come back with a percentage?
I didn't really wanna be specific, I wanted to leave that up to, because.
We could have to know what you wanna add.
And I didn't, I didn't.
And need to know, okay, so need to know the additions, and then like a percentage to cut, and see what y'all, and where you can go find it from. Is that the best way to do it?
Yeah, we need to know what you wanna cut for revenue, and.
How you specifically, how you wanna do this land, this parks and rec, I mean, I know you've.
The sheet of other additions.
Yeah. I, I, I've got the parks and land thing mapped out, but it doesn't, uh, are you talking about all the parks and land over this sheet? Are you talking about this?
No, just, just that rec land, that two point six.
Yeah, just for acquisition of that, tell us what you wanna do, 'cause that will affect.
Well, the part that's gonna affect the budget is what, you know, I mean.
All right, I'll tell you again, uh, if you, um.
I mean, I've got all this written down, the six hundred and ninety-five thousand for the debt prepayment, um, there's a C D, one million sixty-five thousand, you got six hundred and forty thousand dollars in the A G Edwards Reserve.
And remember, you don't have to cash it in right away, if you're gonna, you know, be penalized for that, you could just do it whenever you can, and you can get it from any day, and then as soon as you cash it, you can put it back.
It's just labeling an account.
I was just labeling that to your account.
I think years ago, it might have been a C D, but it's, it's in a, it's just, I consider it a reserve, it's a D L code, reserve, but that cash is.
Is the amount you would wanna take some sales tax to pay for it, 'cause that would have to be cut from all of it.
Hang on, just, hold on a second, that doesn't, may not be necessary.
Did this, um, did this rec number, and I know, I, I sent that to you, yeah, but did that include all this stuff over here for rec? 'Cause it says projected end of fiscal year twenty twenty, so I'm assuming that this is after all this.
Well, it's, you, there's a space in there for projected revenue for twenty twenty.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's added with the balance, then the projects to come up with the projected end of twenty twenty.
Five percent increase in revenue would be thirty million.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have to go back to that spreadsheet I sent you.
And what she said to you, you don't have to do it that way, I was just.
Yeah, but I sent you the updated, remember the, the impact fee stuff that I sent you not too long ago?
Is that not, is that?
Um.
Thirty million?
Yeah.
Okay, the pre-debt sales tax reserve, and I'm just giving you round numbers, is six ninety-five, it's actually six ninety-five seventy-two. And then that investment C D. One zero zero six five, if that helps. One million sixty-five thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay, here it is.
And you have a one zero zero seven five, reserve of six thirty-nine, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's about two point four, about two point two five now. On that other, you could take it from, you could take two hundred and fifty thousand from impact fees.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, you could take it from impact fees, or you, I was saying, you could just borrow from a rainy day, but then you gotta pay the rainy day back, so you got an expense either way.
But you're saying only take two hundred and fifty from impact?
Yep, that would be it, that would cover it all.
So, without borrowing from the rainy day, you're saying?
Correct.
The six ninety-five, the one oh six five, the six forty, and the two fifty?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the only one I think I might have a problem with is that the six hundred thousand is actually investments that are, that.
The which one?
Was borrowed into six hundred thousand, but there's enough cash and, um, impact fees under, um, recreation that can be used.
Which one is that, six hundred? I'm still seeing which one.
That is a reserve, A G Edwards.
That's the one you're talking about, or that's?
Repay debt sales tax reserve? The six hundred and thirty-nine?
I think it's the A G Edwards.
Yeah, that A G Edwards.
Impact fee total for new parks, restricted new parks?
The extra ballparks.
Oh, when you use that, when you use that.
Yeah, I think, I think that you'd take.
It seems like you would just take that, and that, and then you got a hundred thousand, I guess.
It's just your, your impact fees is restricted, and.
But that was restricted to new parks? Wouldn't that pick them over, or not?
Well, additional, additional parks, so, so in your impact fee study, it has parkland, and so, and you have to spend over five years, and right now, we have one point five million dollars sitting in that cash account, so you don't wanna be caught building up that, if you get caught.
I mean, should you not spend that?
You should spend your impact.
That's what I'm saying. It's six and one, half thousand the other.
That's one point five million.
One and a half million, but would you not just spend all of that, and then the investment C D?
Well, you gotta consider the ballpark expansion.
Why not?
Well, you may spend it all, but you know, not on, not on, not on land acquisition, 'cause you gotta, you got all these other things to spend on.
But that's for new, new parks.
It's expansion of parks, too. And the ballpark.
Yeah, I'd say Valanta would.
Four parks in certainly.
Okay, well, so then, if you're talking about the land versus Valanta, it's six and one, half thousand the other, whether you spend it on Valanta or the land.
True.
Because it's all.
That's true.
For new parks.
So are y'all thinking that versus borrowing from the rainy day fund? Because borrowing from the rainy day fund.
Scratch that off.
You gonna have to, you'll have to keep up with that.
Scratch it off.
Well, you could, but I'm not, I'm not one to worry about, I know it is, it's bothersome, but.
Yeah.
I mean, but it's still, it's, it's money that you have to take from somewhere else in the general fund and repay, that, that's the hard part. I know that the bookkeeping for you is hard, I know that.
No, no, I, I, but I know, that's, that's what you just said, I mean, it's, it's both.
But we're gonna, we're gonna keep on, and we're gonna keep taking from these fees and all, and why not, you know, not, not cutting anything, and then back to, well, if you take out this, if you take what Robert said, you take that five hundred and ninety thousand out, that's not something that has to be added. Have you got that sheet?
But that's a careful.
So, add five ninety from sales tax to repay rainy day fund.
You can scratch that out.
Okay.
'Cause that was gonna, that'd mean you would have to cut the budget by five hundred and ninety to meet that.
Right, right, so we're not doing that.
So the other things are all, I think, almost unavoidable, and then, then you get back, then you're back down to the, the revenue, and, I'm sorry, but I just don't think that, that, that revenue projection is unreasonable to do that. I think we might not be wise not to do that.
So you went from twenty seventeen to twenty, I think we increased about seven hundred, eight hundred, seven, eight hundred thousand a year, this last year, we were at twenty.
Two million.
Yeah, well, two point one being closed, but what if you went to, what if you went just thirty million even ballpark, and that's, uh, one point, or you one point four, one point three five? Is that being too aggressive, is that being too conservative?
I think it's a good start.
If you put, if you adjusted the revenues by eight hundred, and you added these things that we said I had, you, you gotta, you gotta cut one point five million, and I look at total government expenditures, we're at twenty-nine point nine, if you cut that by one and a half to twenty-eight point four, you're three million more than you spent last year.
And you should balance.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're, we're oversimplifying, I'm, uh, but you're twenty, you're, you're three divided by, that's increasing your, your expenses by twelve percent over last year. I mean, so it's not, no, I don't, I don't know that we're, we're being overly harsh on that, when you're still having a twelve percent increase in spending budgeted, year after year, when your revenues may go up two to five percent. You're still on that dangerous slope, where your expenses are outpacing your revenues.
So what are y'all proposing, I guess, to cut in revenues?
Somebody?
I mean, I think the real estate taxes are pretty on point.
I had, I had a six point two, I had that cut by one fifty-five, Joe.
The revenue, you had it cut by a hundred and fifty-five thousand?
I cut that to six point two.
My pay with the property tax.
And then the, the total local, I had that ten point nine.
I'm looking at.
So maybe you look at the actions on that, on, on the total property taxes, and you, you know, go up a little bit on that, and I, I don't, I think I was pretty, I mean, I may even be non-conservative, I may not go up that much.
Well, it's in arrears, so just think about the building and the additional properties that have developed in the past two years. Because, yes, well, your property tax is going to be in a year, arrears.
Because there are a lot of houses being built that we're only getting billed that are lot value, because you got a one-year delay before the actual house is being considered.
I understand. I was just going by the trends, though.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that the trend has changed too much in the last couple of years. Do you think there's been a spike in building? I mean, we have some moratoriums and we've had some other things that.
No, but look, that was two years ago.
And then approved building, I mean, we have enough approved building if we stop building or approving development. We have enough building for four more years.
Look, if we hit, if we, if we exceed it, we exceed it, and then we can say, hey, we're doing better than we thought.
So property taxes, six point two.
Yeah.
Local taxes, ten point nine.
I would probably cut interest in the ruins unless y'all have the specific, which you can tie that back to. I'd cut charges for service and other revenue.
Um.
I don't think you can cut the charges for service.
You can unless you go through and cut personnel.
But that's going to cut, that'll cut on its own.
If you cut personnel.
It's going to cut probably some, so.
It's going to cut a little bit, yeah. If you cut personnel.
But we wouldn't manually cut it. It would just cut based on.
Look, based on your actuals, I, I, I don't, I, I think you could probably trim that by a hundred thousand.
Well, let's see, the breakdown on it.
Or just, you know, ballpark a, a number for it, just so that you're trying to get to something.
Yeah.
And that number will be what it's going to be.
Yeah.
But, and I think I'd cut it on that other revenue.
Other revenue.
Seems sort of, I think, maybe not, unless you got, add something very specific, you know, happen with this kind of.
That was four hundred for selling the golf carts.
Well, that's a, yeah, that's a fixed assets is, um, a hundred and forty, like Robert said, for the golf carts.
How much was selling the golf carts?
A hundred, well, two thousand apiece.
Still a four hundred, still a four hundred thousand dollar increase over actuals.
Is, Kim, is it the Alabama trust fund receipts that we don't ever know for sure if we're going to get? Isn't that the one that, I think that's the one that we, we don't ever know if we're going to get, so.
One of them you can't budget. One of them, I don't think you can awfully budget.
The one that Jennifer talks about?
Yeah, I thi, I think we would be safe to X that one hundred and thirty-five thousand out of that Alabama trust fund receipt, because.
If we do that, we sell the fund, we do that out of general fund, and then as you decide and want to spend that on capital improvements, you can transfer that back in as we, and then you can build that up.
Mm-hmm.
And it's easier to manage it that way.
And that way you're not budgeting, it's not hitting the general fund.
Let me go back to that, let me go back to that pilot fee. Is that something we have to approve to, to even raise that money?
It's a trade, it's a transfer. There's other raising of the money.
Okay, you said it again. Okay, thank you. We're not having to raise any, any fees or taxes to raise that now, right?
Yeah, it's basically taking whatever amount you all feel was appropriate as a pilot fee. And that's what Richard Peterson recommended was a pilot fee, because that's what most utilities have for the city. It's, it's, no, franchise fee, it's a.
Sort of like set predetermined percentage for the utility charge for this used roof.
It's structured, a structured amount.
A set amount that you.
Transfer to general.
Didn't you go back before?
Right.
And I think we put in there, when we said eight percent, and we didn't do more than that, because that's the amount of community development it could also.
How close are you to eight hundred, Jill?
Um, well, I just, I just put those in. I put the six point two, got that to six point two, and then the local taxes, um, they're ten point nine. And without touching anything else, I'm at deficit seven hundred fifty-four thousand. So let me go up here and take the state of Alabama out of one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
That's it, your, that's your deficit when you added those other things in?
Well, and, yeah, when I added the expenses, but I'm taking, I'm messing with revenue now.
But if you've already added in these expenses that we ask you to add.
Uh-huh.
Then if you cut expenses, you can balance.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got it down to only seven hundred thousand in expenses.
So now with that one hundred and thirty-five thousand, I'm at eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand deficit. The revenue you just talked about, and then everything on this sheet except for.
That sounds about right, because we, we had come up ballpark when we were saying a million five a second ago, and then we cut out six hundred grand for the five ninety.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Cut that out, so that is about where we would be.
And we need to find out if our department's going to match, because that's how much.
I just had it in. It made.
Three thirty-one, three thirty-one, so.
That could potentially mean.
I think we can trim, I think we can trim. I, I, that's not asking a lot, not for a budget. The expenses is going four and a half million dollars. Um, what, um, when do y'all want to meet again? It's, it's getting really late. What is your schedules for this week?
I'm out of pocket. Friday and Monday. Well, Monday maybe night.
I'm good, he's good.
Wednesday I could be.
I might come a little late.
I could be on Wednesday this week, or.
I'm out Thursday.
What is the time you need to, I mean, you need more than twenty-four hours to try to put all this together?
Ideally, yes.
Yeah, I've already emailed all the things that we can look at.
Jimmy, you're out Monday?
I mean, I can possibly be, it would be kind of late. I'm probably out Monday.
Friday.
Tuesday night.
Hit day Friday?
Uh, actually, no, Tuesday won't work, so I could do this Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Minister council meeting?
You can't do it.
Oh, okay, next council meeting.
We have a council meeting on the night.
Oh. That's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay. I mean, I could do, I could, I could do Wednesday during the day.
Like, you mean the night? You mean like from eight to five?
Yes.
Well. What, I mean, do we have a work session planned yet for the night?
Can we just do it starting at four or something like that?
That's what I'm saying, is you could, anything's been edited.
I think we have.
Well, what I was really, what I was really hoping was that if we could get the edits done.
Possibly.
And then look at them prior to the night, there was the potential to pass the budget on the night. I don't think we can come to the work session. I just don't, you, you know, and then get everything, if there are some tweaks, and then tweak it, and then pass the budget on the night.
Was it the seventh?
Well, if.
I mean, you can do the seventh.
Well, if we can meet another day this.
And then we don't meet again for two and a half weeks.
We can meet another day this week. I could immediately put all the changes together. I could print this stuff out, put it in yours boxes. Um.
Do all that and have another, and staff can come up with another eight hundred thousand dollars in cuts?
Yeah.
We meet a week from today, on the seventh, on Monday.
Just say ASAP. I mean, we can do that, yes.
By, by Monday?
By the seventh, by the seventh. It's a council meeting the night, I guess.
It's the night.
Yes. Like, if we could have a, a meeting.
Work session at seven, from the seventh.
Between.
Planning commission meeting on that date.
Oh, on the seventh?
Yep. And we can still have it, I don't mean that we, we don't have it.
Is this week out of the question?
I could do Thursday night, probably, maybe evening. Five, four, five.
We can do Wednesday, this Wednesday.
I could do Wednesday, I could do Thursday. That's going to be tomorrow, Friday.
I don't know if you can have it all turned around.
I'm out Wednesday and Thursday.
I think we can have.
We'll meet Friday during the day.
I mean, I don't have to be here.
I mean, I think if we say each department has to cut, you know.
Well, I think that's what I'm saying, but what I sent you, we look at which departments are going to the most first. That's, that's what we'll do first, before we go to all departments, because not all departments are.
So this will email, can't we?
Right. And notice, notice, we didn't say anything about utilities, so.
Right, utilities is.
Right.
Well, whenever the personnel at least is in there, because they already had a rate adjustment for that.
Right.
I think we should meet Monday. I know there's a planning commission meeting, but we, we need to have a work session. And we could have a work session in, I don't know where, you might have to check for it, it's the Nixon or the Dell Champ room. And if it doesn't get televised, it doesn't get televised. It's, you can advertise the meeting. I mean, it's locked in the world.
I hate to bring this up, but we really need to nail down whether the, we're going, we're going to do the city administrator. I mean, that's, that's some big ticket items.
I was asking, I said I won't support, I won't support it.
Well, I mean, you know, that's, that's just high dollar amount, and I mean, I, you know, it, it just needs to be nailed down. And I, I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Anybody else have an opinion?
No.
No, you don't have an opinion?
No, I don't want to sue the director. He already said that.
You two are undecided?
I'm undecided.
Jimmy, you undecided on that?
I'm undecided. I mean, I hate to make a, you know, throw a big position like that, but I.
Well, the one thing I know, the mayor didn't take the utilities, but we ordered, we, we, we hired a director of operations.
Or, I mean, does it in the city administrative position?
I know it's not, but I, I, that, that would free up, and we, we raised the salary of the mayor to be able to be full-time and run the day-to-day operations of the city. Therefore, I think the mayor is the chief administrator. We have a director of operations to run the utilities. What else do you need?
Except for, I think, Daphne, almost every city that I put together has a full-time city administrator position.
Well, I guess if I'd envisioned that we had a city administrator running the day-to-day operations, and then if we didn't, and none, none of this is factoring you in, is independent of who's in office, that if we, if we, if we didn't have a director of operations, or if the mayor, if I hadn't have just voted to give a mayor a big salary increase so that they could be a full-time mayor, maybe I would, but I, I, I don't, I didn't think that both would be done.
But utilities is definitely totally separate. That's why I said it's better to look at like municipalities and what they do. Because I'm not going to argue for myself. I don't care what the future salary is. I'm just saying that we do need administrative help. If a, a future mayor is going to be able to spend the amount of time needed to consider the future and other things.
Well, they certainly should.
I feel like I, I do, it's twenty-four seven.
I, I, you know, Mayor, I, in my opinion, you're running day-to-day.
Yeah, I am.
Right? I, I think that you are, so I don't know why you need another administrative position.
Because there are other things that I have, that have pulled me away from the things that we really want to do for planning and future stuff. I mean, that's fit in and, it's, I, I don't want to argue, because I don't feel like really anyone's going to listen to me. I think it just needs, you just need to look at other, other cities, and they definitely have those positions. Beach asset, shores.
If we had, if we had that, I, I literally would never voted to increase the mayor's salary. I personally wouldn't have.
Maybe I, you shouldn't. I mean, I didn't say to.
I, I, no, 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 I'm looking at the council's on that. I would have never done that. And what was the reason for it? To be compensated for a full-time job as a chief executive of the city.
And I, and I said during that meeting, please consider.
You.
City administrator when you think of that salary. I'd absolutely say that.
She did.
Mayor would be covered by. That's my thought.
Monday, uh, Monday, what's the best round list? Dell Champ room. If we can get the Dell Champ room, we'll do it Monday at the five o'clock.
Monday the seventh?
Monday the seventh at five, yeah. I don't, I can't do it before five on a Monday. It's hard enough to get through to Monday as things it is.
And then their council meetings on the night.
Yep, yep. Maybe in the middle of the summer.